Hey. This guy's flashing. It's off now. Maybe it's... Now it's working. Sorry. Ruffled enough feathers. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this special meeting of the Brona Planning Board on this March 16th, 2023. Madam Chair, no, that's me, Madam Secretary. I could call Raul, too. Would you please call Raul? Mr. Bernardo?
Present.
Mr. Katsas? Mr. Lilly?
Here.
Mr. Hindeman?
Here.
Mr. Camuti?
I'm here.
Mr. Dill?
Here.
Councilman McAvoy?
Present.
Mr. Neal? Mayor Roman? Vice Chairman Frensky?
Present.
Chairperson Pearson?
Here.
And Mr. Massara, board attorney.
Rosa.
I was just updated by Mayor Roman. He is stuck in traffic, but he has been on his way since 5:30 today. Apparently, some very bad traffic near the Holland Tunnel and the Plasky Skyway. So, on his way home from work. So, he will be here, and we'll mark that when he enters. We'll just try to note that. One other thing, I was asked by Rich, who is our sound technician, that please make sure to press your Talk button when you talk, because otherwise, it doesn't really take very well for YouTube. The other thing is, is the packets, just as a reminder. Some things are in the packet that may not be utilized in this meeting, but will in the future. So, if you want to just put them back in, and they'll be available at the next meeting as well as any updated files that you need. She's not really taking things out of the file now, Marcy. Okay. Why don't we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? The agenda and meeting notice of this meeting has been posted 48 hours in advance of the public meeting on the bulletin board designated for this purpose, located in the lobby of the municipal building, 600 Bloomfield Avenue, Verona, New Jersey. The agenda and notice of this meeting has been faxed or electronically transmitted to two newspapers circulating within the township as required by statute, in order so that the public may be informed 48 hours in advance of the public meeting. And I just want to correct this statement. It shouldn't say "circulating," because there are no circulating papers within this township anymore. It's kind of sad. At this time, I will open public participation for anybody that has a comment about anything that is not on this evening's agenda. And if you have any comments or questions, you may... Okay. Seeing none, we will close per public participation and move to E. Approval of Meeting Minutes from our regular meeting held on February 23rd, 2023. Everybody has indeed received a copy. Were there any notable or even minute corrections that anybody saw?
No very detailed.
They were excellent meeting minutes. I mean, I will say... Does... Would somebody like to move?
I move the minutes.
Doc moves. Councilman McAvoy seconds. I think we just do an all? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone not? No, you?
I abstain.
You abstain. Okay. Mr. Camuti abstains. He was not at the meeting last month.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
For the record, at this point, I'll say I have watched the meeting on YouTube in its entirety and read the minutes in their entirety very detailed, and I signed an affidavit, so handing it to you, and I'm up to date and prepared.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
For the record?
Sure.
For the record, Chair, that's... Mr. Camuti is referencing the application that has not yet started this evening, but...
Yes. Yes, he is referencing Application 2022-04 Preliminary and Final Site Plan for One Sunset Avenue Block 303 Lot 1 in Verona. At this point, we will proceed with that hearing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. John Inglesino from the firm Inglesino-Lepster in Precipiny, here on behalf of the applicant, One Sunset Avenue LLC.
Mr. Ains, can you... That's funny, I called you Mr. Ains. Can you just talk into the mic a little bit?
Sure, sure. Here representing the applicant, One Sunset Avenue LLC, with respect to major site plan approval for property located at One Sunset Avenue here in Verona. Just to refresh the board, this project consists of a 200-unit multifamily inclusionary development with 185 market-grade units and 15 affordable units pursuant to a Mount Laurel Settlement Agreement. We were last here before the board on February 23rd, so this is a continuation of that hearing. The board may recall that we left off with Jonathan Schwartz as our witness. He is the managing member of the applicant. He testified with regard to operations. He entertained board questions. I think the board had asked all of its questions on the 23rd. Obviously, if the board has more questions, you can ask them this evening, and then we can open it up to the public and board professionals. Mr. Schwartz, you understand that you're still under oath?
Yes.
So, return it back to you, Madam Chair, for questions of Mr. Schwartz with regard to his testimony.
Yeah. I will say for the record, unfortunately, the traffic engineer who was present at the last meeting felt ill this afternoon, and unfortunately, all of his concerns and questions are... He couldn't be here, and he certainly didn't want to come here not feeling well and possibly have something that might be contagious. So, I don't know if it's possible for me to ask for continuation of this, for our expert to be able to pose some of those concerns, you know, pose some of the questions and relate his concerns to Mr. Schwartz at a perhaps next month, week's meeting?
I mean, Mr. Schwartz is not the traffic expert.
No, but he's an operations expert, and some of that...
Well, he's not an expert. He's not qualified as an expert in operations, except that he's operating this facility. In other words, he's not a licensed professional. He is the managing member of the applicant and is responsible...
He's done thousands of these. So, he would be able to answer those questions?
Expert in the sense that, yes, he does a lot of them, but not a licensed professional expert in the way that a traffic engineer has a license or the way, you know, a landscape architect has a license. It's not a licensed person.
I understand that.
But listen, he's not the only person that will probably have questions with regard to operations, and if he wants to send his questions, we'll address them. I mean, but Mr. Schwartz is here to answer questions, not just of the traffic engineer, but of anybody on the board and the public.
Regarding that, Mr. Sackler was speaking with the traffic engineer that we had last month, Frank from Boswell, and I don't really know whatever came of their communications on those traffic issues. Is Mr. Sackler going to make himself available at any future meeting?
Mr. Sackler has testified. He has answered all questions posed by the board, by the board's professionals, and by the public. He has completed his testimony...
Is that a no?
As a witness, if there is an open traffic issue that we are unaware of, that requires Mr. Sackler to reappear, make me aware of it, and we'll see what the issue is and go from there. But we're just not going to bring him back for the sake of bringing him back. You know, we've...
That's a no.
No, that's not a no. Let me repeat myself. What I said was that if there's an open issue with regard to traffic that would require Mr. Sackler to come back and address that, let me know what the issue is, and, you know, we'll see what we do. It wasn't a no. But Mr. Sackler did complete his testimony, answered all questions from...
I hear you.
You know, so...
I will let Frank and Mr. Sackler continue their discourse offline, and if there are... If there was a need for something to be addressed again, then you will be made aware, I'm certain.
Yeah, let me know.
But on this last question, in terms of Mr. Schwartz possibly being available to... I mean, you're almost at every meeting, anyway. If there were...
Well, let's see what the questions are, and we don't even know what...
I don't have a list of his questions, unfortunately. But there were some questions within the Boswell file that probably should be addressed.
This is your opportunity to ask Mr. Schwartz whatever questions...
Are you not going to address the Boswell?
We have provided affirmative testimony for Mr. Schwartz. We are here to... He is available to answer any questions that you have. You may pose whatever question you would like to Mr. Schwartz. If there's a question raised by Boswell that you want to ask Mr. Schwartz, please feel free to do so.
I didn't realize it was going to be so difficult this early.
I'm not trying to be difficult.
I completely didn't.
You know, if you have questions of Mr. Schwartz, ask them.
All right.
He's here to answer your questions.
I'll go out of the gate if you want.
Sure, go for it.
Having not been at the last meeting to ask some of... About some of the things I heard, I do want a little bit of your perspective on the traffic, because from what I heard, as you were like, you were able to pinpoint, people were talking about five Amazon trucks. I thought, yeah, I think there's one, because they like to put everything... They don't like to make multiple trips, as you said. You pinned it at two, for... You suspected two trucks at this point, for this project, right? A day? Packages delivered?
I don't... Did we... I don't know that we spoke to that. I think it's probably usually one Amazon, one FedEx, one UPS a day.
Okay. That's more in line... In your experience, operating places like this of this size, how about the DoorDashers or food delivery? Do you have a, you know, just from your operational experience, ballpark of how many of those deliveries a day and at what time?
It's generally at night.
Generally at night?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the DoorDash side, for sure.
Right.
But, you know, I think Mr. Sackler went through it a little bit, but obviously, we've got some queuing room. We've got, you know, that driveway is wide enough for cars to get by, so, you know, it can fit four to five cars queuing sort of on the outside rim of it while cars pass, and we're not concerned with it at all.
Right. Okay, great. In your testimony last month, you... Phrase that came up over was a project of this size. You kept saying, "project of this size." What is the size of this project? Is it, you know, small, medium, large, heavy-duty, and...
Can you... I'm not sure... I don't understand the question.
But meaning, a project this size meaning 200 apartments.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, okay. So, right, you're just... It's just a phrase that says of the size.
Let me try to help Mr. Camuti. In your experience for what you do, is that a big project, a small project, is it a medium project, average project?
It's a medium-sized project.
Are most of your other... You had mentioned that there are significant other... None of other properties that you own and manage. What would you say the average number of units are of your properties, if you could...
Probably the average is about 200. Yeah, I've got projects at 300, 400, 150.
Great. If you don't mind, just a couple more? Great. So, how many of these projects have you seen from concept like this to build out an operation in your career here?
How many 200-unit projects? Roughly, in my career, eight or nine, maybe 10?
Eight or nine, great. As they operate, have you seen... Did you have traffic studies on all of them?
Yeah, of course.
And how about the... Did they... The traffic meet those estimates, or any that were off or lighter or heavier than expected?
I mean, we don't ever really do post-construction traffic studies, so I couldn't really tell you.
Okay. Any of those eight have traffic problems?
No.
Okay. All right. Keep up the good work. So, that's great. Okay. From operations standpoint, I'm sure you look at all these plans, and I assume every project, you got, what'd you say, 40 buildings, 10,000 units, right? I assume some run really well. I assume some take a lot of churn or effort to keep going. Is that true?
Well, what's... I'm not... I'm confused about the question.
Is there, you know... Does every building operate the same and smoothly under your authority?
I think we're really good managers. Obviously, you know, these buildings have, you know, lots of people in them. With people comes situations, but I think we handle them really well. We have very high retention, so I think that says that we have a good, you know, good management company.
Great, okay. And forecasting, you know, looking at these plans, do you see any potential pain points or things that you're going to look out for when this is up and built that you think, you know, might be an issue that you want to pay attention to, or, you know, like... I'll make an example for you, easy, like people turning left in, like that you may have to do something about that. That'd be one example. Is there anything in these plans that you're going to keep an eye out for once it's up and built?
I mean, I think we spend a lot of time coming up with what we think is the best plan. I mean, we spend a year sometimes between when we're sort of zoned and when we submit for site plans, so I think we put a lot of thought into them. Nothing comes to mind at the moment, but what I will tell you is I think we pride ourselves on being really good neighbors, and once we're up and built and stabilized, if things come up in the community and the neighborhood, we're always there to try and alleviate the problem.
Can you see my notes or something? That's my next question, is can you tell me a time that you, on some of these projects or buildings you've... You're running, where you have addressed it? What's the residential complaint and how you addressed it and satisfied that complaint?
Think of an example.
Would those questions even filter up to you?
Yeah, probably not that often. I wouldn't say that we really... We don't cause a lot of problems, I'll say. I think often it seems like these buildings are going to have a gigantic effect on the neighborhoods they're in, and we don't really find that at all. So, I really... Yeah.
The particular... I'd say, look, I am, you know, just looking at, you know, if I was forecasting, my pain points are possible traffic buildup, which I'm in line. I think, I think it's not as bad as it looks, you know, on paper. It's hard to predict because it's a whole new use. I'm worried about lighting and, you know, light shining in the residential neighbors' windows and, you know, just suddenly from trees or whatnot, that there's this. And then, you know, the worst of them is sort of runoff sewers flooding, or the sewers are at capacity. Can you just tell me how you might deal with, say, the, you know, the neighbor complains that there's light from the garage coming in, or, you know, worst-case scenario that there's major flooding nearby? What would you do to address that?
Well, I think, you know, I think, and I'll have our engineer speak more about the lighting, and these, you know, these lightings are all designed so that there's not a lot of spill to the neighbors, but if something was missed and ultimately, there's a light that's, you're flashing to someone's bedroom, we're... We'll be happy to try and figure out, you know, a way to solve that problem, whether it's changing the bulb, changing the light fixture, whatever it might be, we're going to work with. We don't... We don't want someone having an unhappy experience. Flooding-wise, again, I don't... I think this building's designed so that that doesn't happen, and if for some reason it does, you know, we're going to be responsible for dealing with it.
Okay. Do you have any concerns with possible things you might run into in the build-out of this plant?
Construction's complicated, but I think similar to our management company, we're really good general contractors as well. We're our own general contractors. We've control and... Control, but we have very long relationships with our subs, and I think we'll be okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anybody else have to...
I have a quick question since... I'm just going through the notes of Boswell, just to confirm. Mr. Schwartz, we talked the other meeting about recycling and garbage. Just to be clear, because a couple of the residents had questions about it also. And to simplify it, if you have a need for extra collections during the week, you're going to obviously not have extra garbage building up within the building. You would just schedule as needed in the... As the future, you know, brings.
Absolutely. There have been cases where, let's say, we schedule the private hauler twice a week, but we figure out that that building happens to create more garbage, we'll add a third day a week. I mean, the last thing we want is a brand-new luxury building building up garbage in the hallways and in the trash rooms. I mean, we would never manage that way, of course.
And the same with bulk waste? Do you... You would have a separate hauler for bulk?
Well, depending on the bulk, I mean, we don't actually let our tenants, like I said last time, if they have a couch they want to get rid of, they're responsible for getting a mover for that. There's certain-sized bulk that will allow people to put in the corners of the garages and will help them get it out, but it's only to the extent that our hauler can take it.
Okay. And the same, the second... Their second comment here is about snow removal. I mean, basically, if it... If we get two, three-foot snowstorms, what would you do if you have an excess amount of snow on the property?
Yeah, so we'll often get a... Bring in a backhoe to remove it off-site, and they dump it into a truck if it... If we can't handle it.
Okay. Thank you.
I just had a quick question about when somebody moves in and they have, you know, tons of boxes. If you have, like, a couple of people move in on one weekend, you know, to Jack's point about scheduling an extra pickup, but what do you ask of your residents to do with all of those boxes? You know, like, do they have to break them down? Do you have somebody help out with that? How do you handle all of that kind of recycling?
Well, listen, the boxes have obviously become something that is, you know, there's a lot more in the last, call it, five years. But we have a great system. I mean, we have porters in the building that if the tenants need help, they'll help them, and we, you know, if it's an overabundance of boxes, we bring the hauler in, you know, on that day. But it has not been an issue that we have not been able to, you know, deal with and get through.
Yeah. Mr. Schwartz, just a quick question related to quality of life inside the building. What's your sense of how things will be managed when there's issues with tenants, you know, there's disputes inside, there's, you know, things that happen externally that kind of make their way into the building? Are we... Are we looking at calls to the police? Is there sort of a management system in place that can kind of deal with that upfront and sort of shield the surrounding neighborhood from any disputes that might take place, you know, keeping them from spilling over into the neighborhood? I mean, all different things can happen in a building where you've got 200 units. You know, it's hard to, you know, manage everybody's life. I'm just curious to get your sense of how you see that in other buildings, how you see it here, what's the management structure going to look like?
I mean, we have a dedicated property manager on all of our projects. We then have a maintenance manager. We have several porters. But I would say the property manager would deal with anything that the police... That they didn't think it was a police matter. I mean, I'm not sure an example of, like, a dispute between two tenants, like...
Domestic... Yeah, sure. Domestic dispute.
Like anything else, we call the police on anything that we think the police should be called.
Right. But just internally, how much, you know, how much engagement is there between management and what's going on between the units, the common areas? Is somebody paying attention to that 24 hours a day?
Oh, yeah, we have...
Is it a nine-to-five?
We have, probably for a building of this size, somewhere around, I would say, 300 to 400 cameras. We have cameras everywhere, not in the units, in every common area, in every corner. If we something... If we see something that happens, we can always go back to videotape to deal with it. But these are heavily managed buildings. Our, you know, maintenance manager walks the buildings to make sure that people are not in menu spaces after the time they're closed. I mean, we operate pools. I mean, these are highly amenitized buildings and come with a high level of management. It's no... Not so dissimilar to a hotel.
Yeah, well, I mean, you're going to need it, because when you're introducing this type of density in a single-family neighborhood, it's... It's a... It's a... You're introducing something that is, you know, somewhat incongruent to what's happening in the surrounding neighborhood. So, I would think that you'd want heavy management, but also well-trained management, people would experience, that understand how to, you know, make sure that little issues don't turn into big issues, because I think one of the big challenges that you're going to have there is making sure that that stuff isn't spilling over into the surrounding neighborhood. So, just for the record, I would, you know, state that the building is going to need to have a good amount of management, seasoned people that understand how... That understand the mix between what's happening in the surrounding neighborhoods and what's happening in the building.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Mr. Schwartz, just curious, because this came up in another application once. Do you give access to the police department for those cameras, even just... Even exterior?
Yes, when they ask for them, we always cooperate.
Thank you.
Any other comments in terms of the board? The moment. Again, Mr. Inglesino, further questions are sent to the two of you from Boswell to address that he was incapable of addressing at the last meeting, but he did have a number of questions. He did tell me that. I don't have his notes for you. If there are no further comments in the board, then I would like to open it up to the public to come up and ask any questions of not visiting experts, because Mr. Inglesino says he's no expert, but the property owner.
He was not qualified as an expert.
Wow, your sense of humor tonight is really... At any rate, yeah.
He's testified as the managing member of the entity that's going to be...
I understand that. He's the owner of the building. He knows. Welcome.
Is it okay to...
Sure.
Jonathan McAvoy, 76th Sunset Avenue in Verona. I have a question in general. And we've heard a lot of, you know, questions about other properties, how those have operated, how they've affected the community and the neighborhood. How does this affect people's property values and houses that are adjacent to and in the same vicinity of this project?
I mean, I can't tell you. I really can't tell you for sure. We don't go out and canvass the values, but I will tell you that I could say 100% of the communities we've built, ultimately, the town, the community, have been happy with the product.
100%.
I haven't really gotten much complaints. So, I don't... That's the only way I can measure it.
Quite a return, that's amazing.
Yeah.
Wow, congrats. How does... Because my understanding also is that traffic, I know that's a conversation that we've had, influences property values. So, if we see an increase in traffic and that filters over into, you know, our neighborhood, maybe you're not the right person to ask this question to, and I apologize if that's the case. But it just seems like we're stacking up different components that equate to, oh, jeez, this is not a desirable place to live, next to a building that has bright lights, has streams of people coming in and out, that potentially has issues with stormwater management... management, which I can't wait to hear about, waste management. And I'm just so curious that, you know, I feel like this has not even been discussed. Period. I've been coming to a lot of these meetings from a year and a half, two years ago. And it just seems like, hey, here's this building, here's this project, we're going to be great neighbors, take it and deal with it. But how does that affect the people that live here financially?
Yeah, I-
Roy, that, that's not a question for, for Mr. Schwartz.
That's fair. I, I recognize that and I apologize.
No need to apologize.
Want to strike it from the record?
No, no, this isn't, this isn't court, so we don't strike from the record. If you have questions of Mr. Schwartz, please, okay.
Who would that question be directed to?
Well, the bus, the bus has left the station.
I understand, but I'm just curious.
You might want to talk to George LaBrizzi, the Verona tax assessor, and maybe he can give you, George is a wonderful tax assessor, is an assessor in many towns, and maybe he can give you some historical knowledge of impacts that he has seen, because he, as I said, he does, he's the assessor in many towns, and I'm sure projects have been built and people in surrounding properties perhaps have filed tax appeals. And I think George would be a good resource.
Okay. You can understand our frustration. I hope you can too.
Good evening. Chris Riley, 60 Sunset Avenue in Verona. In the event that you do not rent all of your apartments out, are you going to utilize services such as Airbnb or other short-term rentals to, to keep the occupancy rate up?
No, we do not do that.
You will not do that or do not?
I'll, I'll agree not to do it either way. Yeah, we've never done it. We generally have a policy. We don't do it. But if you want to make it a condition of approval, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you.
As a follow-up, that's a good question. Do, are your residents allowed to sublet or Airbnb their-
No.
Okay. They're prohibited?
Prohibited.
Is that written into your leases?
Well, you, you have to, you have to live there to be, and to be on the lease. There's no subletting. It's in the, in there, there's no subletting.
Mr. Lucino, before we lose that, so, obviously, condition, two, two conditions, that the owner will not make units available via Airbnb, condition number one. Condition number two is that the leases will not permit subletting.
Which includes Airbnb?
Includes Airbnb.
Right, okay. Sorry, Mr. Schwartz.
Double wall. Go ahead. Sorry. What's the anticipated rent for the single bedroom?
We don't know yet.
We haven't set runs.
Okay.
What is the anticipated date of groundbreaking? If, you know, all things-
Do you want, I mean, do you want my real, I mean, we, the-
Yeah.
Well, it all, I mean, it depends on when we get the approval. We can't really measure it until we get the approval.
Right. But it sounded to me, not to jump the gun, that you guys weren't even thinking about it for another two to three years anyway. So I, I hope to God we are not here doing this for three years. I'm just going to say that right now on the record.
Um, it's, well, it's not about thinking. Generally, after we get approval, we then jump right into any state approvals, finish county approval, all the other permits. We try and start right away. In this instance, the school is going to be staying there while they fix the, the place that they're moving to. That's, that's supposed to be about a year to take. So at the time, after you get all approvals, it'll be one year and then we'll start.
So you're anticipating something like at the beginning of 2025-ish?
Probably.
Okay. I just sort of wanted-
Yep.
An understanding of what your game plan was.
Yeah, and I think, just to make the record clear, that's a, an estimate, not a commitment. And, you know, that does have to be coordinated with the school, because the school just can't, you know, pick up and move out while the school is in session. So, you know, that's going to have to be coordinated, likely to occur when school is not in session. So the school has opportunity to move into its new facility.
Noted. Yeah, I wasn't looking at it as a firm commitment. Thank you.
Good evening. Dan Callahan, 15 Afterglow Avenue, Verona, New Jersey. I missed the last meeting as well, so apologies. Are we still confirmed that there's no left turn out and a right turn only in? Is that-
That's written in stone as far as I think.
Correct.
Thank you. And I know, and I know we, I don't think we've done landscaping, but just curious while we have you, really would love to learn more about the other properties, the landscaping, maintenance. What kind of assurances can we have of the upkeep of the trees that are planted, the grass? You know, how frequent do you landscape those properties or maintain those properties? And assurances of irrigation and upkeep of, of what we get?
I mean, we land, we, we landscape every week during the season. We're very good about it. I mean, I think, one of the things I think is important to understand is we, you know, we own these buildings long, in, you know, for a very long time. We're long-term holders. We want it to look as pretty as our neighbors want it to look, right? We need to continually lease it up. People move out. So I, I feel we're very good on the landscaping side. And generally, if there's a whole bunch of dead trees that were supposed to be planted per an approval, we'll change them before we even hear from them. But usually, we'll also hear from the town. They'll say, listen, you have to go ahead and, and, you know, replace this.
And I mean, I appreciate the, the willingness to sort of revisit if a light's shining the wrong way. I mean, I'm hopeful we can still have the same conversation about, can we try to plant some trees in this area or add some, some greenery?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Please let the record show that the mayor is in attendance at 8:10 PM.
Traffic.
And that's a new record?
Nicely done. I passed the torch.
Mr. Mayor, just so that you know, we're, we're basically finishing with operations. If you had any questions for Mr. Schwartz, please.
We're, we're-
Right. Well, of course, yes.
Just a quick follow-up question. Jonathan McRoy, 76 Sunset. You know me by now. Have we seen landscaping plans at this stage? We haven't, right?
They've been submitted.
Has the landscape architect-
Not yet.
Testified? No.
They're coming.
Is it going to happen or?
It's not.
Yeah. Okay, cool. I just wanted to make sure that I'm not missing.
Just speaking briefly to that, I know that there was discrepancy and I, I know that Mr. Lucino and I had spoken about this very briefly, between the landscape architect's plans and the engineer, Mr. Savage's plans, insofar as plantings, number of trees, replacements, et cetera. There was definite discrepancies between those two sheets. And I, I know that you've said that they will be made to agree. So are we expecting, Mr. Schwartz, a resubmission by your landscape architect of any kind of an updated game plan there? Or is-
I'm fairly certain that, I think that was in one of the very early meetings, that we picked up some discrepancies. I think that the plans had been submitted subsequent to that lineup.
Mr., his plans are pretty much no. They have not changed. I did check them against the last plans that were submitted.
Oh, he's, he said he doesn't show landscaping on his plans.
Really? On, when it comes to the tree removal and the tree replacement, you do? And your tree numbers are, are not, they're not consistent with the landscape architect's numbers? And I don't know which numbers are what, you know?
We'll make sure they're, they're, they coincide.
What were you going to say? Are you saying that your numbers don't mean anything? Like, don't look at my numbers.
Yeah, if I, if I may, the engineer will be up here to testify in any questions.
Okay. I, I wanted to point that out to you, that his numbers, the numbers on the landscape architect sheet, we, we only received, we received only one set of those, and that was like last spring, when we got those plans. They have not changed. There have been no updates to those, but the regular site plans did have an update. And the tree section removal and replacement, if they were updated, they're still inconsistent with the-
We'll make sure they work.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if you'll indulge me to, Mr. McRoy, I think, his question on, just to let you know, on the verona.org, verona nj.org, the planning board, the documents are available. You can download them. And, you know, they're, they're unwieldy, very large PDFs, but certainly you could take a look at these plans just like we do.
Oh, absolutely. I appreciate that. I just was curious if there was a testimony associated with-
Absolutely. Okay. Be careful. If you look and email us, you might end up sitting up here. So be careful.
Nora Brennis, 47, Afterglow Way. I've heard that Spectrum's moving out this June into their new school. Is that true?
No. I, I don't think so, but I don't, I'm not here to represent what Spectrum may or may not do with regard to when they move out.
Okay. So if they did move out in June, would you obviously start right away?
Yeah.
Okay. Would the blasting start right away too?
If there's blasting, it would be one of the first things we do.
Okay. And can I just ask a silly question? We are a very small neighborhood, landlocked. If this were your neighborhood, would you be happy if this nice complex moved into your neighborhood?
I'm not going to answer that.
Okay. Are there any other questions for members of the public for Mr. Schwartz this evening? Mayor?
I'm sorry?
You?
I got all my original questions.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Anybody else up? One last question.
I'm sorry. Yes, again, Chris Riley, 60 Sunset Avenue. I take the opportunity to ask this question. It might not be the time or the place, and if so, I'll sit down and wait for that time. But is this the right time to ask about what, what the traffic patterns will be like while you're doing construction? For example, I imagine you'll have a lot of trucks coming in and out, carrying the rock out that you're blasting and bringing dirt in to fill. Is this the right time to ask a question?
I believe it is.
Okay. Are you going to ensure that there's no new driveways cut in so that you'll avoid the no left turn out onto Sunset and no right turn in?
Yeah. So that's not part of, of the application before the board. But what will happen, presuming that this application is approved, there will be a developer's agreement that will be entered into between the applicant and the town council. And that developer agreement will address that and other construction-related issues. This board does not have jurisdiction over those issues. This board simply, or simply, but I mean, simply meaning it's clear what the board's role is, which is to approve plans for the development. The construction-related activities and the like are addressed in the developer's agreement, which will require a lot of meetings, interactions, insurance requirements, et cetera, that the applicant will have to comply with, with the municipality. So that, that will be part of that process.
Okay. So as a citizen, how do I-
Well, Mr. Riley, what happens in those agreements, many times, the, the developer will agree to certain stipulations of the town, including cleaning the streets, you know, making sure that any dust is mitigated through sprinkling or, you know, things of that nature, as Mr. Lucino alluded to, but I don't think he said. The same with the traffic patterns, the times that, you know, reasonable times, obviously, that trucks can enter and exit from the property, the times for blasting. So the, the agreements are comprehensive and they're basically the rules. And the, the township and the developer will agree on those rules. And based on experience, I mean, here's members of the governing body here, they try to protect the townspeople from, you know, the inconvenience that everybody knows that this will cause. So.
If I may, the developer is also still bound by the ordinances of the township of Verona, while, you know, there are items that are settled related to land use, but things that are nuisances or excessively noisy or that violate the township's blasting rules, et cetera, are not permitted. So those are still enforced. The construction code official or the code enforcement official can enforce. So construction would be monitored and required to take place in a lawful way as permitted in the township.
So again, my question still is outstanding. As a citizen, how do I follow this or have input on this?
In terms of the actual operational matters during construction?
Yes.
Okay. Usually that is complaint-driven. If there is an issue with construction going on, you can call the construction code official. He's based here in this building. Generally, he would probably respond same day, knowing him, or actually soon, you know, within an hour. And if there's an issue, he would either issue a stop work order or otherwise direct the developer to comply.
Okay. So as a citizen, I have no, no way to voice my views on what should be in that agreement?
You can. It's, the governing body is the one that would be setting that agreement, which is the mayor and council, which you can speak during public comment at any of our regular meetings, if it's related to that. It's just simply because that's a developer agreement between the township, between the township and the developer and not a land use matter, it just comes before a different body.
Okay. All right. No, it's, thank you. I just wanted to know if it's here or if it's there or some other meeting, you know, where do I go to make sure?
I would recommend that you comment in the, in the general public comment section at the next township council meeting.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just know that they limit you to four minutes there. So you've got to make sure that you, whatever you do, write your statement out and make sure if it's going to go on longer than that, that you have a second, maybe a second person to finish your-
And I'll also add just, there's a, a public input form on our website that goes to the entire town council. So if you want something for council review, generally people will put one of those in first and then arrive at a meeting, sort of reinforce what they've already sent us.
Okay. I'm sorry. Did I speak from here or do I have to?
As long as we can hear you.
No, no. No, no, we need it for recording.
Recording. So I can, I can be assured as a citizen that you're not going to create new rules or regulations or ordinances without it going through the, the normal process at the town council?
We, we can't. If we wanted to change any of the ordinance of the township, there's a two-step process by which we would have to draft and introduce an ordinance, give a first public reading of it, then give a second reading at a later meeting, which includes a public hearing for comment on that ordinance. We'd have to pass it at that second reading. And then there's a cure period during which it could actually be overturned by petition of the public.
Okay. Thank you.
So, and I can tell you that I would not hope to do that. So.
And Mr. Riley, just for the record, you can go online. We do have a blasting ordinance now. I believe it was passed within the last couple of years?
Chapter 156. E code 360.
Mm-hmm.
Nora Brennis, 47, Afterglow Way. What are the blasting practices going to be in protecting our homes in the ne, in the neighborhood? I have a house that's 125 years old. It's relatively close to the property. When they start blasting, what protections do I have that the blasting isn't going to harm my home and my other, and my neighbor's homes?
We're governed by state regs for blasting. Those regs say that we need, as long as the homeowners allow us in, we'll canvas the building, canvas the inside, the outside, take pictures. And if it's shown that our blasting has done anything to the house, post-blasting, we'll be responsible.
And how do we get on that list?
Well, we're actually, we're going to be required to go and either put letters in everyone's mailboxes or knock on doors and say, you know, we're here to canvas. And if you let us in, we do what we need to do.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other members from the public that have questions? Any further comment or questions from the board? Okay.
Okay. I'd like to call Mr. Savage. Savage, you understand that you're still under oath?
I do.
Has your, any of your qualifications or your testimony that you provided when you were sworn in and accepted as an expert, has any of that changed?
No, it has not.
And so your licenses are still in effect?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Savage, you submitted revised plans- So, Mr. Savage, you submitted revised plans recently, is that correct?
Correct.
In mid-January, I think?
Correct.
Would you please provide testimony to the board with regard to those revised plans, indicate changes that were made from the previous plans that were submitted?
Okay, so I'm, have up here on the screen, this is the revised geometry plan that was submitted in mid-January, kind of run through the changes here.
Can you name the sheet numbers when you're saying that, please? You could call it by its proper name, and also give sheet number for our records? Sheet four or five, or something?
So this is sheet five of 16, geometry plan?
It's a date.
The, this is last revised on January 11th to 23rd? Let's start with the changes that we made, so there were meetings and discussions with township professionals regarding, and also at the board hearing regarding the entrance area up here, to the, to the north and west of the building, this area, and I believe that this was testified to, this layout change at the last hearing by the traffic consultant, but, so this entrance was revised in order to permit a fire truck to enter this driveway and make a turn and leave the site. So as part of it, that's really the big change in terms of the site, site plans.
And the type of turn would be a K-turn?
Yes, the vehicle, the fire truck here, based on its size, would have to come in and make a couple point, a K-turn, basically, to be able to turn around in this, in this area. Delivery trucks, things like that, we're able to make that turn without the K-turn. I can bring up the truck turn plans, but run through sort of the changes first of the site plan. So that, that's the big change. The other change we made here is, in terms of layout, is to the south of the building here, this is a new fire retention basin that was added to the site following discussions with the, the previous board engineer regarding stormwater management, so that, that's a new basin that was added. I'm going to move to, whoops. Move to sheet six of 16, this is the grading and drainage plan, just to --
Are you, are you going to go, are you, I'm just curious, for order's sake, to be as orderly as possible, we have this memo that was sent on your behalf.
If you want me to run through that, I can't.
Well, I mean, it just seems to make a little more sense to sort of follow along, a document that everybody has in their possession?
So --
Thank you.
So we'll run through, so, the first sheet of the site plan that was resubmitted was the title sheet, the only thing added there was a revision date, the overall existing conditions, site sheet two, no changes, the demolition plan, sheet three, we added the symbols for the additional soil tests, soil pits that were completed, and we made a, added note 20, which was regarding the existing sanitary lateral to be cut and capped. Sheet four, which is the tree location plan, we added, again, the additional soil pit locations, the symbols was added to the plan. Geometry plan, sheet five, we revised the main entry area, as I just mentioned, we also added site triangles at the driveways, we added indications for, or we added permeable pavement in the eight, the eight spaces that are in the lower loading parking area, just referencing this sheet five again, those permeable pavement areas are down here in this lower parking area, there's total, the eight spaces that are down in this lower area. We added a temporary, per discussions with the fire official, we added a, an emergency pull-off off of Afterglow, this is just an area where we're going to have a depressed curb, and we're going to have some reinforced grass pavers, just for them, they requested the ability to pull a small vehicle, not a fire truck, into that area to, to get them a little bit closer to, to some of the other entrances of the building.
Just before you move on, there are no elevation lines there, is that, I don't recall if that area right there is sloped to a large degree right there?
No, that area, I'll switch over to the grading plan. That area actually is relatively flat, and we did some, did some minor, you know, adjustments to the grade right there, as you can see, kind of flattened it out a little more, so that area actually is in that, in that relatively flat area before the sloping in that area. As previously mentioned, we added the, the bio-retention basin to the south of the building, we added a note 22 to refer that a knocksbox ought to be provided, again, this is from a fire official request, and we revised the chain link fence to be a board-on-board, which I believe was brought up at one of the testimony, board meetings. Sheet six was, which is the grading and drainage plan, because of the addition of the basin on the south side, obviously, the grading in that area changed, and the retaining wall added for that basin, there was also some modifications of the grading of the swell that's on the south side of this building, you know, one to --
Can you point that out?
Right here, if you can see that, right here on the south side, if you can see my mouse. But so that, and then that basin also was, the grading that basin was adjusted so that the slopes of that basin would be in compliance with a green infrastructure swell per the DEP, so this section here would be a grass swell, as noted here, grass swell in accordance with the DEP, green infrastructure.
Do you call that a non-green infrastructural swell?
No, I had at one point referred to the swell that's over here on this, on the east side of the building.
Which one was that, which was the non-green infrastructure swell?
This one here, this one here on the east side of the building.
I'm sorry, I don't see where you're pointing.
The east side of the building, right here, I mean, I can't.
Okay, okay. And there's a swell there?
That grading would be a swell, that's a swell area, so that --
So it's like a divot?
Uh, this area is, it's just, you know, this is swelling the flow down along the east side of that building, and it's, that's, again, that's not a, that we're not, we're not detailing that as a DEP green infrastructure swell, it's just a grass areas, it's a grass-swelled area. This, this area here on the, on the south side is what I was referring to as the green infrastructural one. So, let's see where it was, so, the revised grading on the south side related to basin and swell, we adjusted, there was comment, one of the review letters about handicap spaces and slopes, so we made some minor adjustments and ensured that those are not over 2% as required.
Where, where are you referring to on that?
The parking stalls.
Okay, maybe we should see what we're talking about, the external parking?
Yes, I'm not, I don't do with the inside of the building, so, yes, the, the spaces, there, the handicap stalls that were here, there was just a comment about the slope.
So what did you do?
We just adjusted it, or checked it, that it's 2%, so nothing, that's, that's all, you, you didn't really see any difference here, just some of the grade shots are adjusted to make those accessible. Another comment that was brought up in one of the letters was to provide near some of these inlets that are out in the grass areas here, they wanted sort of like a little depression area near those inlets, we did that, that was in one of the review letters, and then just on this sheet again, I referenced in here, just the structures associated with basin C, so because of the basin C being added, there's a retaining wall, there's an outlet structure, and then there's a, there's a flared end section entering the basin. So, utility plan, this is sheet seven, 16. So on the utility plan, basically, this, this shows the structures and the, and the underdrain system that's within the bio-retention basin, so those, these small four-inch pipes and the outlet structures, et cetera, are now shown on that plan. And then, at the request of the fire official, they requested another fire hydrant, so we added the fire hydrant up here to the, on the, the west side of the entrance drive. Sheet eight, which is profiles, there was no changes. Sheet nine, nine of 16, is the lighting plan. So the last time I was here, we had shown a draft lighting plan, and we had talked about, you know, basically, the lights on the garage was the focus of that, there was comments about the height of those lights, et cetera, so, the, the previous plan when we came in and, that I presented, the, the lights on top of this garage are mounted at 15 feet, we went back and looked at different lights, these are now mounted at 10 and a half feet, so we lowered that a fair amount in order to help with, with potential light, light glare and spillage. We also, well, I'll get to that in a minute, so that was the lighting on the garage, obviously, because of the new lights, the lighting summary, the lighting calfs on that same sheet were updated to reflect that. Lighting detail sheet, this is 10 of 16. So what was added here, there was a request, well, one is the, the new light fixture, we added a cut sheet four, as you can see, the, the lights that we're using here are downcast lights, they're, they have the shield, the kind of a, you know, this, this kind of shield on those lights, so it's not, you know, you're not seeing that bolt from that location, and then we also added the detail for a house shield for those fixtures, so it just shows how the house shield is put on, this, this, the black thing that's around these LED lights, which is what helps direct that light, you know, away from spilling out beyond the garage out towards the neighbors. Sheet 11, which is the soil erosion plan, the only thing updated there was that that plan indicates the grading that I changed, so that plan has a revision on it because the, you know, the grading changed. Soil erosion detail.
What grade, can you please explain that?
I already explained that, that was in the grading plan, the grading changed.
I just want to understand what you had to change on the soil.
I just, as I explained, the grading changed, as I mentioned before, that grading shows on soil erosion plan, that's all, so it's, it's the same grading as shown on the grading plan, it's just, it's shown on a soil erosion plan.
Okay.
Yeah. Soil erosion detail sheet, sorry, the, yeah, soil erosion sediment control detail sheet, because we added, because we added the bio-retention basin here, there's a detail now for this, where the flared end section enters the basin over here on the south side of it, the riprap here, scour hole, actually, that, we have a detail of that scour hole, it's just the rock that is at the end of that flared end section to, to sort of dissipate the runoff coming in. Sheet 13, it's a construction detail sheet, there was no changes. Sheet 14, another construction detail sheet, I'm not sure if you want to pull this up, but we just added for that entrance drive, or that, that pull-off area off Afterglow, we added a detail for the reinforced grass pavers, because we added the hydrant I mentioned earlier, we added a detail for the fire hydrant, and then there was two details that were on sheet 14 that just based upon rearranging of the, adding these other details, were moved to sheet 15, so that's the, we moved the water and sewer crossing detail to sheet 15, we moved the clean-out detail to sheet 15. Sheet 15, another construction detail sheet, we, we removed the lighting details of A and B, because we're dealing with that on the, the lighting detail sheet, we added the clean-out detail and the water and sewer crossing details that were on sheet 14 previously. Sheet 16, steep slope plan, there was no changes. And that's the --
That's the changes?
That's the, the plan changes, in that respect.
And the 48-foot fire truck turning exhibit, the truck turning plan, and UPS truck turning exhibit are the same exhibits and plans that were testified to by Mr. Sackler at the last meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
Mr. Speaker, while we're on that, I think we need an exhibit, I'm not sure that fire truck turning exhibit is behind you.
Okay.
I mean, because Marcy's, you know, a little handcuffed here, so, we can just, for the, you know, we can just put it aside, or just make a note that we need to, to --
You can email us where you left off, or is there, there are two there?
What's the date on that? 1/11/23.
So we need to mark the, the fire truck turning exhibit, I think at the last meeting we did mark that, the truck turning plan, and UPS truck turning plan, I'll make another note just to make sure.
I think Marcy checked and couldn't find it, it was --
The number that it was given at the meeting wasn't, I don't think, accurate with what it needed to be, I think it had to be a higher number.
Well, it, yeah, we'll, I'll make a note of it, and we'll go through the, I have the, we'll go through the transcripts and get to you.
And, Mr. Speaker, one other thing, now, are we marking this, the exhibit that --
Plans?
No, those are, those are just the plans that were submitted, and they weren't --
These are revised, these are just revised plans?
These are just revised plans.
Not new this evening?
Correct, correct.
What about the memo, that that's not an exhibit?
That was, I mean, that was submitted to the town, understanding?
Talking points for him, it's not an exhibit.
So, just out of curiosity, are you, do you, are you going to, by way of any explanation, kind of describe how you intend to get from sheet one to sheet seven?
Not, I don't, not --
No, you're not going to do that?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
The way the architect kind of went through sheets, and he said, you know, and he described the detail, and I just, that just hasn't happened with you at all?
Well, just, I mean, I had provided a testimony at the beginning of this, went through the site plans, I, I mean, I spent a long time in front of the board, doing that, I can go through the plans, I just went through the changes again, but I --
I just want to know who has questions, because apparently, this is just something that's like pulling teeth, we really, I, I know --
Madam Chair, with all due respect, there's been 165 pages of transcript testimony that has been provided by this witness with regard to plans that have been issued by the board, public, your professionals, there's been detailed testimony with regard to these plans, we want to accommodate you, so if there's something specific you'd like, you'd like to see, we will do it, what Mr. Savage has done tonight is he has testified with regards to the changes in the plans, if there's something more you would like him to do, please say so specifically, and we will accommodate your request.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Savage, on all these plans I see along Sunset, this came up a couple times, there's, from the driveway moving along Sunset on the property side, this is the west side of the property, or northwest side, there, there's no sidewalk there.
the property, or northwest side, there's no sidewalk there. Can you tell me why there was no, there'd be no sidewalk there? If someone's walking down this driveway and they want to go for a walk down Sunset, do they have to cross the street to get to a sidewalk? Could they not walk a sidewalk if they want to take a walk up afterglow? They have to cross the street to get on a sidewalk and then cross back over? Is there any plans to add a sidewalk to this area?
I mean, there wasn't initially, the idea was to have a sidewalk.
I mean, because there's a sidewalk added from Bloomfield Avenue-
We're going to add a sidewalk.
If you'd like a sidewalk, we'll add a sidewalk in along there.
Okay, because I know testimony last meeting by the traffic expert, I specifically asked him about it, and he said, "No sidewalk would disrupt the traffic pattern."
If you would like a sidewalk, Councilman McAvoy, we will add a sidewalk.
And you just testified to the lighting fixtures on the top of the parking deck. Can you tell me, adding the 10 and 1/2 foot fixtures, does that bring you under the height requirement?
That would really be-
Well, so, our view is that a light fixture is a mechanical piece of apparatus, which is not included in the definition of height, so would not require a variance. What we have attempted to do is to, in response to questions from the board and concerns raised by the public legitimately, is we have tried to really limit and, you know, push that down. Obviously, there's a balance between, you have to, for safety and illumination purposes, you want to find the right balance as low as possible, but still providing proper illumination. Let me ask the witness, is your opinion, based upon this revision, that you have optimized the balance between reducing the height of the lighting structures while at the same time being able to provide for proper illumination of the parking area?
I do.
Now, if there's spill over with this new light fixture, looking at it, can you add a shield? Because we're mainly worried about, obviously, the afterglow side and the western side of this, there's a resonance to the western-
The lights, we do have house shields on these. The house shields with LED lights is not what you would think of in the older lights, which was a shield that came down. These are shielded with that, you know, they're shielded with this sort of plastic thing that kind of sits over the LED lights here. That is the shield for them. So, and as mentioned before, these lights are also, you know, downcast lights that have these shields that are around the light bulb as well. But certainly, as mentioned before with Mr. Schwartz, is if there are issues, you know, with the operation and the light shining a certain way that it shouldn't be, you know, they are willing to look into that and address it.
And Councilman McAvoy, if you're, I mean, I think, Mr. Savage, you're saying, this is, after hearing questions and concerns of the public, you went back, this is your best effort to address those questions and concerns, correct?
Correct.
And certainly, if the board's professionals have additional comments on how we can even fine-tune what is being presented tonight, we're happy to do that. We're really trying to, again, you know, get exactly the right balance here between the need to have proper illumination in the parking area, while at the same time absolutely minimizing any impact of the lighting, either the light itself or the mechanical apparatus that, you know, that is the lighting fixture on the residence. And so we're doing the best we can to do that, but if there are additional, you know, thoughts or suggestions, we're happy to-
No, certainly, I agree, you basically cut down one-third from the height.
Yeah.
Mr. Luciano-
No, go ahead.
I'm looking at my December 1st notice, and if we decide that we did, the light holes are mechanical, that was an issue, I think, that we agreed to defer and then to get back to. And as much as Councilman McAvoy said he appreciates the decrease, I thought that we were going to look into the, how the redevelopment agreement defines height, or how the redevelopment plan defines height, and how the mechanical fixture fits into that.
Do you recall having that conversation?
Vaguely, I can talk to you again, and we can follow up on that.
Okay, thanks.
We know the mechanicals, I-
I understand the issue, we can, we can talk about it.
Okay. I mean, does the 10-foot bring you over the 60-foot height limit?
No, the issue is-
And if so, how, how much?
Yeah, the issue is, the issue is that mechanical equipment does not count towards height. So, the question that your attorney is raising is, is the light fixture a piece of mechanical equipment? We believe that it is. I think he's looking for a little more from us regarding that, so we'll provide it. I don't see how it could be anything else, there has to be lights there. They are mechanical definition, you know, that's what they are. But, I mean, we'll see. The reality is, is that you couldn't have a plan that didn't have, or permit proper illumination on the parking area. And so, respectfully, I think the issue is not so much, what's the definition of mechanical equipment, because, again, we think lights are mechanical. I think the question is, are we optimizing the need to provide proper illumination in the parking area, and balancing that by having that as low, as least impactful on the area as we possibly can? Obviously, if you say, if one were to say that these light fixtures are not mechanicals, well, then, you wouldn't have any lights, you'd have an unsafe condition. That can't possibly be the intent of the redevelopment plan. So, we are, you know, again, attempting to hit that sweet spot there, to balance those two competing interests. We've done that, as you've indicated, by coming down one-third. We've done that by, you know, doing the best possible job that we can in terms of providing shielding, et cetera. But we are, we are and remain open to additional thoughts or ideas that will help further optimize that balance that we and you, I think, are attempting to achieve.
I appreciate that, but we are not the ones, we set a height limit, and you're saying they are mechanical. I was going to ask, well, what I asked already before Mr. Masara asked the question, do these light fixtures bring you above that 60-foot limit? We're not the ones here that decided to put a 60-foot parking deck up. That's why I'm asking, does this put you over the limit? So that if we have to have this conversation later, and they are not mechanical, then what do we do moving forward?
And that's exactly what I was referring to, that it does put you, according to my notes, it puts you over the limit.
It probably does, but there is a, there's a project that is defined in the redevelopment plan, in the redevelopment agreement, in the settlement agreement, that provides a detailed concept plan that was attached and approved by the governing body. So, I think any issue that comes up has to be viewed in the context of permitting that project to move forward, right?
You know, my only concern is, if it violates, then you're going to seek relief, and the relief will or will not be granted. I don't, like, the project itself speaks for itself, but if there is something that is not in compliance, then it's got to be addressed. And that's all I'm saying, you know, just, it's got to be addressed one way or the other. The board can say it's okay and grant approval, or the board, you know, I understand your argument that this is mechanical. My belief that something is mechanical would be the top of the elevator shaft, you know, with the-
The HVAC.
The HVAC, things like that. I've never, in my experience, I've never called a light pole a piece of mechanical equipment. Now-
We'll look into doing that, but I think you have to read this stuff in the context of what the project is, and if you're going to take an interpretation that the light fixture is not mechanical and is a variance, and try to deny the application on the basis of that, I think that is really, would not be appropriate at all. I think that would be really-
I'm not suggesting that, what I'm suggesting is-
You're suggesting that the board-
We don our eyes and cross our titties.
No, I agree with that, but I think, I don't think it's an issue that is discretionary. I think what is discretionary, and what is appropriate to push us to do, is to get to that optimum point. And that's what we're trying to do. And, you know, again, we'll, if we have to do some more fine-tuning, we will. We've done the best we can at this point. So, you've asked us to go back to the, you know, the proverbial drawing board, and we did. This is what we've been able to come up with. If there's any further modifications to be made at the suggestion of the board, of the board professionals, we're happy to do it. We're very happy to do it. We want a, we want a safe environment in the parking area that's properly illuminated, and we want to have as least impact as possible on the neighbors. Very sensitive to that, we've heard from them, we appreciate their concerns and comments, we recognize them, we acknowledge them, and we want to address them.
May I ask a question, please? Is there a reason why you can't light the top of the parking deck with bollard lights?
Just the distance of a throw, I mean, you're talking a 24-foot drive aisle, 18-foot parking stalls, so the bollards would most likely have to be out in the parking areas? I mean, they just don't, they don't have a throw that far.
You don't believe that a bollard on either side of a 24-foot drive aisle would have a 12-foot throw?
You're talking about having a light in the parking stall?
No, you referred to the 24-foot drive aisle.
Yeah.
You know, I'm curious what the maximum reasonable throw of a bollard fixture-
Yeah, I mean, I would have to look at the different levels of the bollards, but, you know, these are typically three, maybe three and a half foot tall, and I wouldn't think you'd want to have that placed at the end of a parking stall. I mean, on the line, obviously, but I've never, I've never seen that occur.
I mean, I've visited communities that are designating themselves as dark sky communities, and I've seen parking decks in those, and I usually see a much lower level and more muted form of lighting on the top of those parking decks. So is there a particular lighting standard that you're trying to design to here, or?
Part of the township ordinance, I believe, they have a requirement for, I forget if it was one or two-foot handles, it's, we're designing to the ordinance. And there's differences if it's a valet parking versus, you know, you drive up and park. But that's what we're designing, we were aiming at this towards the township ordinance. I mean, if there's, I haven't seen anything of what you're describing in terms of a bollard light in the parking stalls like that, or adjacent to the parking stalls, if that's something we can certainly take a look at, I haven't seen that.
Or at least you could potentially use it in limited areas.
Well, I mean, we can take a look at that, I have, I've never seen that or done that myself, but-
I mean, it seems like there's two issues you need to do here. You need to be able, in some areas, to light over the top of a typical vehicle in case something is parked, and you need to be able to throw horizontally from wherever you can put the fixture to the center line, essentially, so that you can cover the area you're trying to light. And I just, I don't know that the only way that can be accomplished is from a 10-foot or 15-foot high light fixture.
We can certainly look at, I mean, the issue would be, you know, the cars are, well, I don't know, five feet tall, six feet tall with SUVs and such, and so, you know, bollards would, you know, you would have limitations. You're going to need, at least on the perimeter of the parking garage, which is the area that would be most concerned to the neighbors, you're going to need something mounted in that, in that 10-foot range, because you have to throw over the cars. You're not going to be doing a bollard there, you're going to have unsafe conditions. So, we can certainly look at maybe reducing some of them, but I think at the perimeter, which is of concern-
And I think, I think my ask would be, if potentially a mix of fixtures could bring down, if you needed fewer of the tall fixtures, if you could make up with them, just shorter fixtures.
I'll take a look at that.
Thank you.
Any more lighting questions?
I just want to add real quick, to that, Mr. Savage, my main concern is the western side of this garage, the open end, because this garage is, just happens to be next to the closest residence in this area. So my concern is the light spillage onto that property to the west, right there.
So with the-
So when you're saying a mix of lights, that's the area of concern, and probably mostly from the top deck that would shine down onto a neighboring property.
And, you know, as I presented with the lighting plan the first time, I mean, you know, this lighting analysis that we're doing here, you can see that, you know, in this south area, beyond that garage area, you know, you're down at zero in terms of your foot handles. So you're not getting that. Now, if there's a light in the distance, you're going to know there's a light.
Yeah.
But, but the increase of the isolux, you know, I'm sorry, the lumens that you're going to get on the ground from that fixture, that's not occurring there. Again, you're going to see a light at the distance, because, of course, you can see the light.
So I would say if you change this, if you can focus on that area, along that upper-
Well, I'll look at that area, that may be one of the areas of concern because of the, you know, needing to light over the vehicles. But we'll take a look at that, you know, maybe shave off another foot or two or something, but we'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
I wanted to revisit a question that Councilman McAvoy brought up several months back related to blasting. So on the eastern edge of the property where it drops off pretty severely, it's almost like a cliff, blasting is going to occur relatively close to that, to that edge.
Well, I don't think, you know, my understanding is that the intent is to use drilling, to my knowledge, blasting has not been settled on as the method to remove the rock, but it would, the intent is for drilling, so. But I can continue with that specific question. I mean, I wouldn't be able to answer about the method of construction, if you're asking for sort of the distance of the building to that slope, I can weigh in on that.
And Councilman McAvoy's question, as I recall it, right, was destabilization of that edge of the property. So if there was blasting used, I don't think, probably drilling much less so, but what would be potential mitigation of any destabilization? Because that would be-
That really wouldn't be me, I mean, that's a construction, that's means and methods, that's not, that's, that's not my expertise. I would weigh in on it. I can weigh in on is that, I think, as the architect attested about it one of the previous meetings, the building in that corner, the building that's down here, you know, the closest part of that building to that sloped area, the excavation in that area, the amount of cut is in the two to two and a half foot range. It's a very shallow cut, in terms of that. The major amounts of cut is basically in the center here, basically where, mainly where the garage is, that's where you're seeing the big cuts in terms of the rock. Here, you know, and looking at the distances, the closest point of the corner of the building, we range, there's one that's right around 40 feet from the, from what you would term where the slopes begin. A lot of the building, you know, basically this fence line that you see here at the edge of the lighting plan, well, let me go to the grading plan, it makes more sense. So, you know, to a large extent, you know, the fence, and here it's actually beyond the fence, but the distance that we are, you know, closest to, just sort of in this area, if you can see that, the building is about 38 to 40 feet from that slope area. Most of the areas, it's getting further away. And again, as mentioned, in that corner here, which is the closest area, the cuts are two, two and a half feet, based on the earthworks that have been done so far.
Okay, thank you.
Can you go to, oh, sheet number, grading or drainage, you're there. And can you please tell me, we're talking about your bio-retention basin? I don't know if you, I don't know if you, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. So we're looking at your bio-retention basin, right? And it looks like you have an inlet there, right at the edge of it.
Are you talking back up here? There's no inlet.
Timeout, I'm talking about like an over, the overage drain. It looks like that box.
Oh, it's the outlet control structure. Yeah, so that, yeah. That's what attenuates the flow. So that's what's going to have an orifice in it, a weir in it, and that is what allows some of that water to back up and slows it down as it discharges. So it's not, it's not an inlet, it's an outlet control structure.
Okay. And what is the elevation of that outlet control structure?
Well, depending, the top of that is right there, it's 562 and 1/2.
62 and 1/2? And what's the top of the wall?
Right there, 562 and 1/2.
So what happens if this whole- So what happens if this whole thing backs up?
The basin here.
If it fills up?
Yeah. I mean, that's one of the purposes. Well, it fills up, there's the orifice, the weirs that are going to drain that basin.
But it's at the same elevation as the top of the wall, so it's just going to spill over the wall.
No, no, that's the top of the structure. That's not the weir elevation. That's not the, the, the way the water gets out of the basin is lower than that.
Where? So, I mean, if that basin fills up?
So, if you look at, hold on a second. So, this is on utility plan. So the top of that structure.
Okay, slow down, please. You're jumping to a new plan, and I'm not there yet.
Yeah.
So I want to take my time, and I want to understand what you're talking about, please. If you're going to answer my question, which I truly do appreciate, and I want to understand this, you have to wait for us to catch up with you. Sure. You're more familiar with your plans than our way. So what page are you on?
The utility plan, sheet seven. So when you look at that basin there, this is, this will be the plan that, that shows you the, you know, how that outlet control structure functions. So towards the bottom here, which will be a little bit above the bottom, you're going to have an orifice, and then you're going to have a little bit higher up at five sixty, you're going to then have a three-foot weir, which is basically a cut out of the, out of the face of the structure. That's how the drainage gets out of that basin. The top of that's just.
Timeout. The, so, the pipe that lets water out of the basin is lower than the top of the wall?
Well, that's not the, the pipe is over here. The pipe out of this is down at the, is, hold on a second. So the outlet control structure, the out, the invert out of that is at five fifty-one. That's about 10 feet, 10 and a half feet lower than the top of the wall.
Yes.
That's a pipe underground.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The, going back to this, this is not a very deep structure, correct?
Are we talking about the basin or the outlet?
The basin.
The basin, no. These are small-scale bio retention basins. They're not meant to be deep.
So the depth of it is, why don't you testify as to the depth of it?
So this, this bottom of this structure here is, hold on a second. The bottom elevation, if I can just scroll over a second here. So these notes here, so the bottom elevation is five sixty-one, the highest at the, and then if, I'll read, I'm going to read from here on the grading plan, sheet six. During the water quality storm, the basin, the elevation in that basin gets to five fifty-eight seventeen. The two-year gets to five fifty-eight sixty-eight, the 10-year gets to five fifty-nine sixty-seven. During the 100-year event, that gets to five sixty point nine one. That's still, you know, a foot and a half lower than the top of that wall in the 100-year storm event. So, you know, it's a small basin, but it, you know, it doesn't accept a lot of flow. The basins, it's a small-scale bio retention basin.
And what kind of infiltration do you think will be experienced there by that water?
No. What the bio retention basin is, as, you know, we've gone through previous testimony when we did additional stormwater tests, the site has, of all the permeability tests, has no infiltration occurring. So what this bio retention basin, it has an underdrain system. So when you have soils that don't meet the DEP regulations, which is, this site doesn't, you cannot have infiltration. In that case, you need to put in an underdrain system, which is what was shown on sheet seven, the utility plan. These pipes are perforated pipes that sit down in a stone bed beneath the soil of the bio retention basin. The water that gets into this basin is going to perk down through that soil, which would give it some water quality, even though we don't need to address water quality for grass areas. The soil soaks through that couple feet of soil, reaches the perforated pipe, and then is discharged out of that basin.
Into what basin?
Into the basin that's in the garage.
Right, basin A.
Yep.
Right.
Now, just so you know, that runoff that was running along that south side in the previous design went to that basin directly through via inlets in the yard before I added this basin. So that basin in the garage is designed to handle, was designed to handle all this flow even before I added a bio retention basin, which slows the, which slows the runoff down even further.
Now, taking what you just said about the underdrains provided, now let's go over to the permeable parking spots near inlet 12 on the other side of that same plan sheet. Can you explain how the water from, gets from inlet 12 to basin B? And, because there doesn't seem to be any detail.
Yeah, I mean, the initial thought over there was that this was just going to be just going to be going into the ground, and that pavement would not be functioning the same way as the bio retention basin. In the review letter recently from Boswell, one of the requests was about underdrains. So we're going to add underdrains beneath the permeable pavement. Those pipes will connect, and it will be connected to this underground basin.
There is absolutely, right now, there is no conveyance method, correct? Like, we just don't, is there a conveyance pipe? I'm just curious.
The water, the infiltration underneath that pavement is such that that water really doesn't go into the ground. So the water would run off into those inlets, just as it, just as it's designed for. That underground basin there is designed to take all of that pavement and attenuate the flow.
So even with a 2% grade on some of those parking spots, couldn't that just ice up? Since it's not infiltrating and it's not going anywhere in a heavy rainstorm?
That would be exactly like every parking lot that you've ever.
So the answer is yes, it could. Exactly like every other parking lot, I guess. Yes, it could ice up?
Any parking lot, a 2% slope, and parking lots are generally graded at, usually you try to stay above 1% of a parking lot.
Because that is a handicap spot right there, correct?
There are, there are.
Two?
Yeah, there's a handicap stall there.
All right.
Those have to be under 2%. But parking lots are generally down to 1%, which is a flat or slope, or they go up to, you know, if I'm, in a parking stall, I try to keep it under five. But other parts of parking, you know, as you can tell over here, were steeper because there's no parking. That's same as any other parking lot. There's no difference of a potential for icing with this design versus any other parking lot in the world.
Is there going to be, what, you're adding an underdrain?
We'll add underdrains to underneath these two sections. There's sections of permeable pavement, sorry, yeah, permeable pavement here, and then in these other parking stalls, that will, those four-inch perforated pipes will connect directly into that underground basin. That basin's already been designed to account for that drainage reaching it.
Is there, is there stone underneath there? How many, how many, how many feet?
Not feet. It'd probably be like, it'd probably be like a foot. We're going to design, it'll be a little deeper now that I'm putting perforated pipes in it.
Is there geotech fabric wrapped around any of the stone underneath there?
Typically is, so you stop the finds.
I'm asking you if that's what the plan is.
It will, yeah. It's a standard thing. The perforated pipe would have, would have fabric on it.
I just feel like getting a yes or a no. No, there isn't. It's not planned, or yes, we're going to do that. I, I'm not getting answers out of it.
I, yeah, I mean, I said yes.
Thank you. Okay. All right. A lot of what I have questions about is going to be relative to your stormwater management. So please, anybody else that has questions about?
Is this, I mean, you were just talking, you're talking about stormwater and.
I'm talking about your site plans. When we get into your stormwater, you'll know. I, I, I could tell you right now, we're talking about the measurements on your utility pipes on your plans. You haven't testified about your stormwater management. I will wait for you to testify before we go there.
Okay.
Right?
That's, yes, that's next up.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay. I'm sorry.
This isn't a, this is more of a general question. Have we gotten the report yet?
The stormwater management report? It's online, yeah. It's everything, it's been posted online, yes.
Does the stormwater report represent these revisions?
Yes. The only thing it wouldn't represent, well, it wouldn't be in the couch anyway, is the addition of the underdrain pipes that I'm going to add to this permeable pavement.
Okay.
It doesn't impact the.
It doesn't affect the, okay.
So that'll be more functional once those underdrains are added, correct? You expect it to be, it'll make the flow into basin B seamless, correct?
Yeah, it'll, it'll have a different way to go into the basin, yes. Right now, it can flow overland into the inlets that are, that are in, that is in that parking area and get to that basin as well. But the underdrains will help pull the water down, and it'll get directly into the basin.
Yes, Mr. Savage. Just two quick questions. Does the revised plan show the removal of the balconies in the southwest?
That would be the architect.
Okay.
Yeah, he testified to that. We did remove those balconies to the southwest that were, I guess, along the afterglow.
It's actually the, yeah, I guess they have the southwest, and I see in one of the handouts, but maybe, as you said, it's from the architect. There's actually a balcony diagram showing that.
That would be the architect.
That would be, okay, okay.
And he's coming back.
Okay, good. That was my question. Thank you.
Next one.
Whatever you would like.
Oh, well, I'm going to bite you tonight. Go ahead. Do you have further questions?
Yeah, I'm not sure if relevant to the plan, so tell me. I want to know about the building, is it, what's the carbon footprint of this operating? Is that?
Not, not me. I'm not sure if that'd be the architect as well, but I'm not sure about that. Not my, not my wheelhouse.
Okay.
Mr. Alvarez, do you have any questions about the site plans?
Yes, how are you?
Real quickly, I want to introduce Mr. Alvarez from Boswell Engineering. He is here representing the Tachita Barota this evening. Anything in the, is that, we're good?
Okay. I have a bunch of questions, actually, regarding this. The first one is that the stormwater report, the plans actually show 11, 10 permeability tests, but only. Yeah, yeah. The two were submitted, so.
Yeah, the, they were mistaken and left out when the, when the report was revoked, so we'll, they'll be in the, we'll send a revised report.
Mr. Alvarez, we're, he hasn't testified on stormwater management just yet. We're just talking site plans right now?
Oh, okay.
Do you have any questions on the site plans?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Up to you whether you want the public to ask questions with regard to this segment of his testimony, or whether you want me to go right into stormwater.
I think we should just take a five-minute break, and then we'll go into public and then storm.
Okay.
(inaudible)
I don't like these black mirrors. I keep them up at 2:00 AM.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't have...
No, Mike's been kept a hug here.
Hug?
Yes. I don't have... I don't want to play in the cops, but I definitely have some issues.
All right.
Whatever. I just have my...
So there...
Yeah, so he's got... Supposed to be...
(inaudible)
And then I was...
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 (inaudible)
Yeah, you know, so we'll see.
There's always, you know, it's... Yeah. Never know, always stay on. Never know, always say no. That's my prayer for the candidates. See.
Cool.
All right.
(laughing)
I would say this happens with a lot of...
Now, we used to be asking to...
She left.
Um...
What you said is...
No.
I mean, I've done it before. It's been a long time.
I mean, I've done it before. It's been a long time.
(inaudible)
I'm like, oh, this is fun. What I could do about it is...
Yeah.
Not my best.
Yes, I am. Because I can keep saying that.
I did it very good when I did it.
I have already...
Twenty years.
I know.
You know, like...
I was in that three thousand old house. Okay. Thank you. It works. It's funding.
Yeah, it's great.
Mm-hmm. And that's how I do. Nice.
Yeah. I did. And that's right. And that's me. Sorry. Okay? Let's... It's a big green.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, if anybody from the public has any questions regarding the testimony on Sheets 1 through 16 for Mr. Savage, please come up to the mic, state your name, and please try not to repeat any questions that were asked in the past.
Chris Riley, 60, Sunset Avenue, Barona. How is there going to be electric power brought to the project? Are you going to use the existing power lines, the power poles that are right on Sunset Avenue right now?
Yeah. At this stage, there hasn't been those detailed discussions yet with the utility company. That's usually after a board approval, but the intention would be to tie into the lines that are along the frontages and route that to the building underground.
Okay. So you're not going to... Again, trying to look at the diagram and also looking at one of the pictures that you... I guess it was a drawing that you presented, somebody presented. I'm not sure if it was you or not. There was no power poles in front of...
Oh, that was, I think, rendering the architect had presented. To my knowledge, I mean, the existing utility poles, you know, you can see some of the overhead wires here on this one side of the site. There... You know, there's no... You know, those connect to the homes across the street. There's no plan to change that. Or this site would tie into those existing public lines.
Okay. All right. And that won't impact anybody. I would imagine that that's bringing power to that neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm not sure how the system works here, but, you know, basically, after we get approval, there'll be conversations with, you know, the electric company, and they would go through, and that's where they get into the detail of, you know, whether this system, the circuits here or whatever, has the power or if there has to be some improvements or things like that.
Okay. So you're not intending to change the power lines that go from Bloomingford Avenue up to the street into the neighborhood?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that has questions in particular for these site plans?
Just a quick question. Jonathan Matheroy, 76 Sunset. The basin... What is that, the...
South?
Yes, correct. Is that just like a pit that is... What does it look like?
I mean, this is a... It's a bio-retention basin, so basically, the bottom of it will be soil. There's usually, you know, a couple of feet of soil, and there'll be some plantings in it when the landscape architect comes up. And in this case, because of the way the site grades, it's sort of like it enters it at the one side and it's kind of dug. You know, we had to build up with the retaining wall, the down slope. The landscape architect's plan will show plants in there, so it won't be just...
So it's not a concrete tub? It's...
No. No. There'll be the retaining wall, but then there's going to be plantings within the basin.
Okay. Thanks. One last question. Sorry. Does the addition of a sidewalk have any impact on the ability for somebody to make an illegal turn out of the complex?
Adding... I mean, the sidewalk we were talking about adding was on this side of the entrance. I would... I don't see any impact. It's just going to be a sidewalk.
It's not easier to make that turn?
It wouldn't make it easier or harder. I don't think it'd have any impact.
And it goes still the same as...
Yeah.
Cool. All right.
Nora Brennis, 47, Afterglow Way. And I don't know if this is part of the testimony or not. I know you said you were going to be putting other fire, water hydrants up there. What's the water pressure situation? Is that something that's been addressed or is that to come? Because the water pressure in the area is very, very poor.
That's to come. There's been some preliminary discussions with the township regarding water. There is a known, at this time, some of the wells are offline in the township. Once those are back online, in our discussions with the township professionals, there would be that pressure. There would have to be at that point hydrant flow tests where someone would go out there, you do measurements of the flow to make sure that it... You know, the building would have the pressure. Worst case, there could be a booster pump of some sort in the building to get that pressure.
Would it take... And again, I don't know if this is testimony you're talking about, but I have to have a booster in my own house with... For years because the water pressure is very bad. So would the building with even the boosters take away more water pressure from our neighborhood? Is that something, again, that you could testify on?
Yeah, probably not me. I mean, that would be more of a mechanical engineer, an MEP.
Would we be getting that opportunity?
You know, I don't think during, at this period, you know, those discussions with the water company are at that position to sort of know that.
Again, I didn't know. Just wanted to...
You know, just so you know, I mean, the building is going to have to provide a minimum pressure for the fire suppression system. So, you know, that's going to have to happen. If that trickles down to some improvements or something, you know, that pressure's going to have to be provided, and those discussions will be through, you know, with the township. So, you know, it's just... That's just not something that gets into that level of detail at this point.
No, I know, but it really does affect our neighborhood right now, so I just have to have to consider it.
I would have to say, I mean, the township, you know, in the water department, I mean, they would not be able to... You wouldn't be allowed to have a, you know, to say drop the pressure for the rest of the neighborhood because, I mean, that would create an potentially unsafe condition or something. So, you know, there would have to be measures or, you know, if it's so turned out that way, there has to be improvements that, you know, that would have to be addressed.
And would that be after the fact or would that still be in the planning stages?
Generally, you know, once we get the approval, you know, once we, you know, hopefully get the board approval, we would then move to start getting those approvals for water, sanitary sewer, and all those other permits. As part of that process afterward, we'd be in those more detailed discussions. With that, also, at that point, the MEP engineer would be brought on board, and they would have the design of the sprinkler systems and all that detailed information as well. So that's just, you know, it's certainly before the building's constructed, but it's just not at this stage.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Brennis, wait, because township engineer has some input.
Yeah, so the way it works is that the fire hydrant test is performed. So the test has to tell you basically how much flow is available at 20 PSI. So the pressure in the pipes cannot drop below 20 PSI. So whatever flow is available at that pressure is the fire flow that is available for that property. So they need to perform a fire flow analysis to compare the demand for the fire flow of that property versus whatever is available from the fire hydrant test. That's basically what they have to do.
Okay. And just to be clear, I think what Mrs. Brennis is concerned about is even if the building does install a pump and they have ample water pressure with that pump, that the neighborhood's pressure is going to be that much more reduced in lieu of this new building that's sort of... Yes, that's exactly what I'm trying to say. So that's... Is that a possibility or do you know the answer to that? Do you have any feelings on that?
That's correct. The analysis that needs to be performed includes all the pipes in the surrounding areas, so they need to check what the pressure is. It's not going to drop.
So will that kind of test be performed by the applicant? That kind of aerial testing in that whole...
Typically, the testing that would be required in this would be the hydrant flow test. And so we would contact the township. They would tell us, you know, do these two hydrants or whatever. You need a flow hydrant. You need the one that has the test on it. And that would give you those numbers. Typically, we're not doing a water analysis, and we've been holding off on doing the hydrant flow because it's understanding that the township right now doesn't have a couple of their wells...
That is correct.
Online. So at this stage, that's a known issue. You know, based on the timing of the project, we weren't in a rush to test it, and why test it if it's not going to be the final pressure? Because, you know, right now, the system isn't working at its full capacity. So the intent was to wait till those wells are back online.
If the situation does arise, that the pressure is, even with the two wells back up online, if the pressure is compromised, well, besides installing a pump, what else could be done?
That would be... That's not my... That's an MEP, mechanical engineering type of question. I don't know that answer.
Hmm.
Yeah. I mean, you know, what it could be is working with the, you know, if the water company thinks that they need a new line or something installed, a bigger... Like, say, there's an eight-inch line in the road, and they think, hey, you know what? If you put a 10-inch line, you know, that could be something, a water main replacement, but that's, you know, that would be in those discussions at that point. But if those tests are done and it's not adequate for this development, that's the chain... That's what's going to have to happen. There's going to be those discussions about, okay, well, how do we get that? And if that ends up being some section of water main replacement or something, that's where it leaves.
Are there any other questions for this expert on his site plans?
Sorry, I don't mean to belabor this. Is that in regards to fire hydrants solely or are we talking about residential water pressure for showers, sinks, et cetera?
I mean, it's really both. I mean, the hydrant flow test is really looking at the sort of the more urgent thing, which would be your fire. Having the pressure for your fire flow is the, you know, is the major thing you care about. But that would cover making sure you have adequate pressure for the rest of the building, showers and...
Correct. Right. So if the pressure goes down, and we're talking about increasing a water main from eight to 10 inches, who deals with that? Is that a township thing?
Say that again.
Okay, so if the water pressure goes down and we're finding the tests aren't up to snuff, and he suggested, I believe he said, maybe it goes from...
Oh, no, I was just throwing out some possibilities.
Correct. So if that was the scenario, and we went... We had to go from eight inches to 10 inches, like, where does the burden fall?
Well, there is something in the developers' agreement that talks about infrastructural upgrades that may be necessary within the township that would be obviously included in their build-out, depending on what... You know, if the discovery of a problem happened four years after their build, I don't know that it could be looked at that way. But if it was a problem going into the build, I'm sure that there would be a discussion about, you know, whose responsibility that would be. I'm not... I can't make that determination, you know?
Okay. All right.
But can you make guarantees or assurances that the neighborhood water pressure won't go down from this construction?
No.
No? Okay.
Good question. Here's Paul.
Yes, please.
Just going back to the electrical service issue, the site plan drawing does not show underground conduits for either electrical or telecommunications. I just want to make sure your testimony is that your intent is to take both as underground services?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
And I typically don't show those on a site plan because those two utilities are so specifically driven by those utility companies, whatever, you know, they generally, they route it the way they're going to route it. That's why they don't show them. But yes, I mean, the plan is for onto the site underground.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the rock? Isn't it mostly rock?
You know, there is. The rock is down at varying depths, but, I mean, just as the pipes that are going to be put in there, I mean, if they had to put in a small trench to run those lines, they're going to have to do that. I mean, it's, you know, we have other stuff on that property in terms of the storm drainage and things like that that possibly, depending on the locations, could be within rock as You know, there is, in certain areas, there are, you know, X number of feet above the rock too, so it really depends on that ultimate route. And those are shallow utilities.
Any other questions about site plans? I mean, I'm sure there'll be more at some point, but if you want to lead into your testimony on stormwater management, please go ahead.
Okay. So I guess sort of a little bit of background. So we had originally done a number of geotechnical soil testing out there. Per some discussions with the board engineer at the time, Brightview, we met with them and we discussed another round of geotechnical testing. We ended up doing, I think it was another 10 test locations, pinpointing a lot of those within locations where we were potentially going to have underground storage systems to look at whether or not infiltration was possible. So as part of those testing, you know, they would look at what's the depth of groundwater, what's the depth to seasonal high water. They also did permability tests. So of the 12 permability tests that were done throughout the property, 11 of those came back at zero, basically, no infiltration. One of those tests came back at .65, or .625, which the DEP, in terms of the minimum design for any kind of infiltration, you need to have a 1-inch per hour field test. So that actually, that .65 is under that and would preclude the use of infiltration on the site for that purpose. So, you know, going back through those tests, you know, basically, we confirmed that the site has no infiltration or recharge in existing conditions, and we, you know, got better information on depth of rock and seasonal high indications. We then went back and in those discussions with the board engineer, looked at, you know, what can we still do that would be green infrastructure? And so parts of those discussions with Brightview at the time was to adding some of the permeable pavement. We looked at the swell on the south side over here, and then we spoke about the bio-retention basin. And so... And so basically, from the previous stormwater design that I testified to, those are the things that we added. So we added a little bit of permeable pavement. We added a bioretention basin on the south side over here. And we made some adjustments to the swell that leads up to that bioretention basin such that that swell meets the green infrastructure requirements according to DEP. So that's sort of some of the overview of it. And so looking at the different, you know, the DEP stormwater requirements, the main sort of three things that you would need to address would be quantity, quality, and recharge. And so I'll just go through, in terms of quantity, I guess to start off with, I think one of the earlier review letters was sort of had some comments about major development or not. And, you know, it was never a question about us not being a major development. We always were a major development, both under the definition within the township ordinance and DEP's ordinance. Basically, by being a major development, it triggers the DEP regulations in terms of stormwater, which gets into the quantity, quality, and recharge that I'll talk about. So with respect to quantity, you know, basically, in the drainage report that was submitted, we had looked at four drainage areas of the site, meaning, you know, based on the topography of the site, existing conditions proposed, water flows off in basically four directions. One of those is off to the, to the, to the south over here, towards Dryer Road. Another portion of the site's coming up towards Afterglow. Some of it's flowing on towards Sunset. And then there's some of this flow that, you know, just based upon the site sloping down here, flows down to the east here, ultimately making its way out towards Bloomfield. And so those are the four drainage areas that we looked at in terms of our analysis. Now, in terms of the site, before, there was a, currently, there's a building, a smaller building with a lot of paved areas, dirty and pervious from cars. The new building is largely building. The majority of the site development here is the building footprint, which represents a clean type of runoff. Also with building, the building footprint is a larger footprint than the building was previously. And so when you look at the drainage areas, basically, when we looked at the drainage area flowing to the south, towards Dryer and Parkhurst area, we are reducing the area that's flowing towards there. Because basically, the entire footprint of the building is taken into the underground storage basin in the garage. So over here, for example, on the southern southeast corner of the building, this area here in existing conditions would have flowed in the direction of these homes to the south and west. That runoff area now is being directed into this basin. So basically, what that does is we're reducing the volume of runoff and the rate that is flowing towards these adjacent properties, meaning the homes over here that are all along. Afterglow, we're reducing the volume and rate towards Afterglow, and we're reducing the volume and rate towards the east as well. Towards the, towards Sunset to the north, we're taking, again, the building and some of this outlying pervious areas are getting into this underground basin in the garage. That basin is set up to attenuate the runoff, so it reduces the rate of runoff. And that basin, basically, we're reducing the rates of runoff towards Sunset, where we connect and exist, to existing inlet. And we're meeting the reductions that are required by the DEP, which are, you have to, you can release up to 50% of the two-year, 75 of the 10, and 80 of the 100-year. So we're meeting or exceeding those, meaning, exceeding, we're under those percentages. So we're discharging less than what we would be permitted to by the DEP regulations. What that also means is that to that system out on Sunset, we're reducing the rate of runoff to that existing inlet. And so I believe in one of the original BrightView letter, there was some discussion about whether or not a downstream analysis was needed. Based upon our rate reductions, meeting DEP requirements, my opinion is that that would not be required downstream analysis here. And I think that was also basically agreed to, I think with Basel's most recent comments, they agreed with that analysis. So basically, in short things, in all the directions that were running the runoff leaving the site, were either in three of these drainage areas, we're reducing the volume and rate, meaning the actual physical amount of water that leaves, and then the rate, meaning how much over a certain time goes off. And then to Sunset, it's meeting the reduction percentages for the DEP. So the design here that's outlined in the drainage report has charts in it that list the pre and post volumes, rates, et cetera, from the design. And in that, you can see that we're reducing and meeting all of the DEP requirements related to quantity. So that's quantity. So I'm going to, a second here. So in terms of water quality, so the, as mentioned earlier, the site does have an increase in impervious coverage of about an acre. However, as I kind of mentioned before, in existing conditions, this site has a lot of surface parking. And so what the DEP considers that to be is a regulated motor vehicle surface. That type of impervious area, we're reducing by .58 acres. So with this new development, the majority, well, our increase in impervious, you know, is all clean, clean impervious. So building, sidewalks, things such as that, the patios by the pools and things like that is what's considered by DEP to be clean. Clean runoff, meaning it's not a production, it doesn't produce the TSS, the total suspended solids, that's the concern for water quality. The motor vehicle service, surface is what does have the potential to create that TSS increase. And so based upon the DEP regulations, when you have an increase of more than a quarter acre of regulated motor vehicle surface, you would need to comply with water quality on the site. This property, we're reducing the regulated motor vehicle surfaces by, as I mentioned, .58 acres. Therefore, just, you know, therefore, that's in compliance with the DEP regulations. And just by the fact of putting in a building with roof without the car parking that was on the previous site, that improves the water quality leaving the site, just by the fact of the building versus the parking area. So that, you know, that's really water quality. Now, that bioretention basin, although not required to have water quality and the runoff that reaches that basin is generally pervious, a little bit of impervious from the, from this courtyard area, but that bioretention basin does provide water quality, even with the underdrains. So with the underdrains, that couple of feet of soil that the water runs through filters it, that provides water quality. When we do add the, when we do add the underdrains underneath this permeable pavement, the water reaching that also then would perk down through that, in this case, a stone bed underneath the pavement, and that would also get filtered and provide water quality for that area. Again, not required under the DEP regulations, but that will be provided in the design. The last one would be recharge. So recharge is looking at the amount of water or amount of runoff that falls on the site and how much of that gets into the ground and ultimately to the groundwater. As mentioned before, we had done a number of tests originally, and then we, in discussions with the township professionals, went out and did a whole nother round of geotech tests. Of those, 11 of the 12 found zero infiltration. The one that did find it was .625, inch per hour, which is very low. And so the DEP has a recharge, annual recharge deficit spreadsheet, groundwater recharge analysis sheet. So we completed that spreadsheet from the DEP using the soil testing that we have on the site, and that indicates that there is no deficit. And so basically, there is no recharge that you have to compensate for. And therefore, we're in compliance with the DEP recharge requirements because there is no deficit. So using their spreadsheet shows the compliance to that. Another part of the new stormwater regulations or green infrastructure, and this was brought up through the BrightView review letters, and we had meetings with BrightView engineering to discuss ways in which we can incorporate some green infrastructure into the project. And so the results of those discussions were, as previously mentioned, the permeable pavement, bioretention basin, and creating a section of swell over here that meets the definition of green infrastructure swell. And so, you know, those were, those were aspects that were incorporated into the design after that meeting with the township professionals. And so, you know, based on that, you know, we're providing green infrastructure, you know, to the extent that this site, based upon its soil conditions, et cetera, would permit, we're providing some green infrastructure measures on the site. And then, you know, in addition to green infrastructure, the DEP also has a, has a low-impact development checklist, which was submitted as part of the revised drainage report. And so this low-impact development checklist, it goes through, you know, basically, looks at the design and looks at things that are low-impact, that are helping to maintain as much of the existing runoff patterns as tight as possible. And so I'll just run through some of these, that, again, this is in that drainage report. One of the, in terms of DEP checklist, one of them is that the design should protect areas that provide water quality benefits and areas particularly susceptible to erosion and sediment loss. And so, you know, just note that, you know, the site does preserve a large percentage of the site in the natural vegetation, that the site, you know, coverage of the site is allowed to be 75% based upon the zoning. Our site, when you look at purely the Verona portion of the property, is at 64%. So we're well under the allowable lot coverage. So that means that there can be more landscaped areas, more grass and trees and plantings and such. And then in areas, part of that, the same lead checklist item is about soil stability. So there were some comments in the BrightView letter, and we had done some minor changes to some of the, some of the grading and provided calculations for stability, showing that these swales and graded areas are stable. Next part of the low-impact checklist, minimize impervious surfaces or breakup disconnect the flow of runoff over impervious surfaces. As just mentioned, we're allowed, per zoning, 75%. If we look at just the Verona portion, we're at 64%. So we're well under that. Next one, we maximize protection of national drainage features and vegetation. Again, as previously noted, we're preserving a large amount of the natural vegetation. We're well under the allowable coverage, so it allows more room for grass and landscaped Next one from that checklist, minimize, minimize the decrease in the pre-construction time of concentration. So time of concentration is just a measure of the amount of time, you know, a rainfall drop or whatever would take to get to a, to a point of analysis they have, to reach an inlet or to, you know, to get to, from the beginning, the high part of the site to get down to Sunset. How long does it take for that raindrop to get there? Obviously, when you have a site that has grass and you change it to impervious, it gets to wherever it's going to go quicker. So in this site, you know, in terms of trying to maintain the pre-existing, you know, not increase the time of concentration much as possible, you know, again, by the fact that we're under the allowable lot coverages, we're preserving more of that grass and landscaped areas, so that helps to maintain those air, that time of concentration. Almost done. Minimize land disturbance, including clearing and grading. Again, this is sort of these comments from DEP, they're kind of repetitive. Again, we're under the allowable impervious coverage. Minimize soil compaction. The proposed development is subject to soil erosion requirements, some of that is, of which is soil compaction. And it's also, again, noted that, based on soil test, the soil's durability is non-existent, and that would be one of the negative impacts, if you did compact the site, would be to reduce the permeability. Provide low-maintenance landscaping that encourages retention of planting and native vegetation, minimizes use of lawns, fertilizers, and pesticides. So this, you know, we have a landscape plan that had an eye towards providing landscaping that is low-maintenance and native or adapted to this environment. Obviously, the landscape architects, I'm not sure what's hearing, they're coming up, she'll cover that. Provide vegetated open-channel conveying system discharge into and through stable vegetated areas. The design, we incorporated the squalls, as I mentioned, and that leads to the bioretention basin. And then there's also, the areas along the east side is also a vegetated area where, you know, some of that runoff would have the ability to, you know, based upon the very limited soil conditions, would have the ability to get into the ground a little bit if possible. And the last one of this low-impact development is just provide preventative source controls. You know, and so that, again, we're, that's a part of a requirement. Soil erosion, and again, we're, we're going to have to be compliant with soil erosion requirements. There'll have to be a stormwater pollution prevention plan that have to be in place, et cetera. And so we would be in compliance with that. And that's it.
Do you mind if I start? Do you want to start?
Well, I just have a couple.
Go for it.
So can you go back to existing conditions where you talked about the four different runoff areas? And just break it up between the parking surface runoff and the building runoff? So in the existing condition, surface parking runoff flows right into the street inlets?
Well, you know, on the existing site, you know, it had some drainage that then would discharge, you know, to the, to the surrounding roads.
So there were some onsite?
Yeah, there were some, there was some drainage on site, or is some drainage on site, not treated in any way. So that is just, yeah.
And then in terms of the building runoff, was it just downspouts onto the grass and it ran off on the surface, or did that go underground?
To be honest, I don't know the existing building, if it went to the underground into the pipe system or overland. It, I believe it, from my understanding, that there was downspouts that went into the inlets of certain areas. We didn't have detailed plans of that existing drainage system in terms of the roofs, but it was, it was assumed and based upon the information we had, that that does get to the onsite drainage.
Exactly. And then in the proposed, everything goes underground first, correct?
The building.
Building.
Yeah, so everything in the building is piped internally to that underground storage basin.
Now, in terms of the required vehicles, I'm sorry, the regulated vehicle surface area, does that roof garage count?
Yeah, that, in my numbers, where I'm saying the .58, that's accounting for that.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, that's...
And you're still reducing?
I'm counting that as motor vehicle surface.
Okay.
And we're still reducing the .58.
That's all, Ed.
Just to follow up on that, that's the, what floor is that on the...
I forget how he calls it. I mean, it's the top floor.
It's the top floor.
It's the top floor of that. I don't know if that's...
Four, six?
Four, yeah, I think it's like six because it's a split level or split...
Where does that water go?
It's, there's scuppers or, you know, drainage collection within the garage, just the same as you would have sort of something on a roof, and that's piped internally, it'll run over to one of the columns and run down the column, get to the system that's in the bottom.
Into the same basin, like, the same way the buildings do?
Yeah, oh, it's, you consider it, it's a building. I mean, it's part of the, it's the same sort of thing in this case.
But the other surfaces that are underneath, like, I assume... But the other surfaces that are underneath, like, I assume they're dry and?
Yeah, I mean, to be hon, I don't do the design of that. I mean, they may have some drains in there for snowmelt, rain, you know, stuff like that, but, yeah, I mean, you're not getting opposite rain into them.
Okay. Thank you.
And just those retention tanks under the building, just what's the mechanism for to manage the water that's in there? You said that there was, based on the different year, 10, 20?
Yeah, well, I mean, that, I was referring previously to the surface one, but it's the same scenario on this. So this is a, you know, this will be a, in this case, it's a storm tank system, is these chambers that store the water. At the very end of this, you can, I mean, it kind of pixelates here, but right up here is an outlet control structure. So the same as that you had in that surface basin, this is an outlet control structure that sits up against this storm tank, this storm, the underground storm system, and it has the same thing. It has an orifice at the bottom, and it has weirs that allow the water to go out at different times. So it will let, you know, in the two-year or whatever, the lower storms, it'll let a certain amount of water out, and we have to hit those percentage reductions of the rate. That's DEP.
And that's mechanical or electronic?
It's physical. It's just a hole.
It's mechan, oh, it's just a hole?
It's just a hole, yeah. So this outlet control structure has just a cord hole in it, that's an orifice, and then it has a weir, which basically.
Okay, I was on the impression there was some control with the release of the water based on the levels?
No, it's all physical. It's just, it's, you know, so you put in a three-inch orifice, or you put in a two-and-a-half-inch orifice, and that dictates how much can get out in a certain time, or I put in a two-foot weir or a three-foot weir and more, you know, so that's how I, and the elevations, that's how I control the discharge.
Thanks.
All right, great. I'll ask a few questions. So you just listed all of your low-impact development checklist items. Most of them have, sorry, I don't have my mic on, and I told everybody to do that in the beginning of the meeting. You listed all of your water quality benefits, water quantity benefits, breaking up the disconnect, et cetera, et cetera. And then you stated that you preserved about 33% of the site. You left that undisturbed. It's written in.
Yeah, I mean, I have that written, I didn't state.
Can you show me on your site? Can you shrink that down and show me 33% of an undisturbed site?
So what, just so you can, what that 33% was referring to was the areas that are trees. So when we looked at the tree areas, meaning, you know, looking at the drip line of the trees, I looked at how much of those areas of trees are on the site, and then how much of those areas are preserved. And so it's not 33, 33% was for the entirety of the property, which is both tracked.
So Montclair?
Within Verona, it's 17% is the amount of the existing trees that are left undisturbed.
That's not what this report says. This report says 33% is left undisturbed, very proudly in a number of places, actually.
Yes, because you got to remember the drainage report here, this property is the full property. So 33% is how, I have to do a drainage report for this entire property. For the drainage design purposes, it's 33%. Doesn't impact the drainage analysis because I'm looking at the coverages for the site. And so any portion of the site that gets to an underground system that's in Verona, I'm looking at the coverage. So the percentage doesn't matter in that sense, but my drainage report is for the whole track.
Okay, well, I just want to put on the record that when the Montclair property benefits this application, it's utilized. And when the applicant does not want to answer questions from the public about benefits of that neighboring property, as happened at the October 27th meeting, about three hours and seven minutes into the meeting on YouTube, in which Mr. Lucino stated, and I quote, "We don't have an application. This has nothing to do with Montclair. We will do whatever is required, but we are not going to answer questions about Montclair legally. Any questions about Montclair are completely irrelevant. We're not answering your regards to Montclair because we're not before a Montclair board." So the bottom line is, we're not supposed to take those pieces of property into, we cannot think about those pieces of property as a benefit to this site.
Yeah, it's not a benefit.
There's no benefit.
It is a benefit. You're utilizing it as a.
No, not, no, I tried to explain, it's, I'm looking at the.
First of all, I respectfully object to your comment that when the applicant thinks it's beneficial to them, they include Montclair, and when they don't, they don't. That's beyond the pale, frankly.
I actually don't agree.
That's inaccurate, it's wrong, and frankly, it's just not an appropriate comment to make, and has no basis in fact whatsoever.
I just cited you.
What Mr. Savage said is that as a professional in performing a drainage report, that he's required to do it on the entirety of the property. That's not to benefit, that's what his job is. Why don't you talk about that a little bit? So that the board understands what your scope of work needs to be in order to do your job as a professional and to provide the drainage report.
So the drainage report has to look at the entirety of property. So the, what happens on any part of the site, coverage-wise, is incorporated into that drainage report. So there's no benefit, like, there's no benefit of preserving the trees on the Montclair side. It's, the coverages are built into the drainage analysis of the Verona side, at whatever percentage cover that is, and Montclair. So the drainage design is based upon the proposed and existing land coverages of this entire property. The vast majority of the Montclair property shoots off to the east and isn't even, isn't even relevant because it doesn't drain towards our property. So, you know, that township line is very close to the eastern edge of the building. So I don't understand your comment in terms of a benefit, it's a drainage analysis, that's how you have to do it as a professional engineer. So I don't know how else to explain that to you, but there's no benefit, it's not a benefit, I'm looking at the land coverages everywhere on this property.
Right.
And I'm meeting the reductions to, I'm meeting reductions to every direction, to Verona, to, towards the Montclair, towards suns, everywhere. Every single direction, I'm reducing either volume and rate, or the rate, all in accordance with the DEP regulations, in every direction. I'm not benefiting only, I'm not sending more water to Verona and reducing it to Montclair.
I realize that, and I appreciate you saying that, but, you know, the report shouldn't rely on Montclair's property when you're trying to kind of make the.
The drainage report does not rely on Montclair's property. It mentions a property that's.
Well, why do you keep saying, I'm not being disrespectful.
You are, and you're being incorrect. The witness has testified that in order to provide a drainage report, he has to, as a professional, to provide the report, take into account the entirety of the property. Just because you would like to see the report just on Verona doesn't mean that that's the way the drainage report gets done.
So we can talk about Montclair included in the entire drainage report, right?
You are mixing and matching concepts that are irrelevant.
I'm not, I'm confirming this. I'm asking you to confirm what we're supposed to be looking at as a whole in tote for this stormwater management.
Why don't you ask your board engineer whether or not it's appropriate to do the drainage report on the entirety of the property? Because that's testimony of the witness. This isn't mixing and matching Verona and Montclair, you know, for purposes of pumping up a number. This is about a professional doing a report that he's charged to do, as he's duty-bound to do, and the numbers are what the numbers are.
I understand how you feel, and I'm sorry.
I'm not, it's not, it's not how I feel.
It is.
No, it's not how I feel.
I'm asking a question.
But I'm stating facts, and I want the record to be clear. I'm not expressing a feeling. I'm expressing facts as testified to by a professional engineer with respect of which you are not. So if you have questions of the witness.
I am not, you're correct.
Then you can ask the witness.
I am.
Or you can ask your board engineer whether this witness is testifying correctly or not.
I'm not asking if he's correctly testifying.
You're making allegations against the applicant, which are unfounded, unfair, and inappropriate.
I think we're getting.
I made no allegations.
No, 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 just, it's getting a little argumentative here.
Yes, I agree.
Let's take it down. Let's move on. He answered the question, you explained yourself, let's move on.
Thank you. And not used to getting yelled at for asking a question. Whatever the case, can I talk to you about your boreholes? I would like to.
No comment.
Okay. I very much would like to understand, first off, why we don't have the results of six new boreholes that you put onto this site?
There was a number, as I mentioned before during.
But it was just, I didn't really understand or hear because.
Yeah, well, as I said, I.
Can we get that?
I already addressed that, I said yes. What I said is during the repro of that report, they were mistakenly left out of that report.
I would, I have a question also about the last stormwater report that you put in, did not include the May 2021 boreholes that you just added into this report?
Yeah, I know, but the final report's going to have all the ones that were done.
Okay, so you did, ones in 2019, at a time of, they did it when it was off-season. It wasn't the seasonal high-water table time. They did it September of 19.
Again, in terms of, you know, I'm not a geotechn engineer, but the indications of seasonal high, you don't have to do the test during the time of high. It's, you, yeah, these are professionals, they look at the modeling of the soils, and they can indicate the staining of the soil to determine what the seasonal high is. That's standard practice. You have a report that was signed by a professional geotechn engineer, who's signing with his license, stating what the seasonal high elevations and around where elevations were.
So does the NJDEP BMP manual state that the seasonal high-water table testing should be done?
The testing, the testing in the geotechnical, professional geotechn engineer is in accordance with DEP. We've done it that way and submitted to DEP all the time. Seasonal high is based upon indications of soil staining, which indicates the seasonal high-water table.
So in the first stormwater management report, you had a bunch of boreholes.
Boreholes.
Sorry.
Boreholes.
Boring logs, right? And the purpose of boring logs is exactly what?
Well, it's either one, the boring law, the borings or a test pit, there's just two different things. So the boring is a drill, so you get a drill rig, right?
You hit rock, right?
Or you, whatever you hit.
Soil.
You hit gold if you wanted to, well, not if you wanted to.
And then the permeability or perk tests are the ones that show permeability?
Yes, but you can do, you can take a sample from a boring and do a permeability test, and you can do a test in a test pit, in terms of permeability. You can also get the seasonal high and other, you know, the soil profile out of a test pit, just the same as you could out of a boring. There are just different methods to use. Some of those were utilized that way, there's less disturbance with a boring, but you can get the results that I need in terms of stormwater design from either of those tests.
Okay. When you were testifying before about the bio-retention basin, I just, I'm curious, what's the square footage of that?
I don't have the square footage. It's designed.
Roundabout?
What?
Roundabout?
I have no idea. It's designed to handle the flow that reaches it in accordance with the DEP. So the DEP has regulations about how high that water can get, and then how quick and such that I can let it out. So it's sized as needed for the amount of runoff getting to it. I wouldn't size it smaller than that, and I wouldn't size it bigger than that. So it's sized as needed for DEP regulations.
Can you tell me what the slope of your, non, well, I don't know if it's a non.
The swales, they vary, I think, I think some of them, some areas might be in like the 5% range, but we provided in the drainage report stability calculations showing that those swales are all stable. So those slopes could be 20%, as long as it comes back showing it's stable.
Right, they just can't be over 33%. That's it.
That could be, I mean, well, it's not going to be stable at that point, but you could have a slope over 33%.
So I am expressing concern over the fact that there is, somehow, we go back and forth between the Verona stormwater ordinance and the DEPs. The Verona stormwater ordinance, we knew you were a major development, of course, you know. You're adding an acre of new impervious. In our ordinance, new impervious surface does not have to be motor vehicle surface, and yet if there's 5,000 new square feet of impervious surface added to a site, then we require quality control.
Yeah, and I'll, you know, and my understanding is that the NJDEP stormwater regulations, which are incorporated through RSIS in this case, for residents' development, would supersede an ordinance, stormwater ordinance, that tries to have something that is more strict than what RSIS is, which is what your ordinance does.
But what your developers' agreement agrees to comply with the Verona stormwater ordinance and any other environmental laws, so that is.
Where applicable, I mean, I don't think.
Don't say where applicable.
Well, let's just, so that's a conversation that the board attorney. I said that's a conversation on the subject of whether or not RSIS preempts Verona's ordinance with respect to this application is a conversation that the board attorney and I need to have. We started to have, we need to have that conversation. That's a, with all respect, it's a legal question, it's not a factual question, it's a legal issue, and board attorney and I have to work together to resolve that issue.
At this point, and I just want to add this, I am going to some of the meetings right now that are being held to see if RSIS can trump a more strict municipal stormwater ordinance. At this point, it cannot. Right now, the municipal stormwater ordinances can hold sway over RSIS.
The most recent case, unpublished appellate division case, ruled the opposite of that, where, and your specific language, and I haven't had a chance to dive into it that deeply because Mr. Lucino and I had a conversation about that this morning, but the most recent case, and again, somewhat factual sensitive, in Haddonfield, ruled in favor, ruled against the borough of Haddonfield or the township of Haddonfield, saying that their ordinance could not be more restrictive than the RSIS standards. There's a case going back also, something condominium, the name doesn't come to my head, which would also make me believe that the RSIS standards apply and not the municipal standards. The issues that you raised, and this is something that council and I have to discuss, the issues that you raise are what is contained in the developers' agreement, what is contained in the ordinance, and in the redevelopment, I'm sorry, the developers' agreement and in the ordinance. There were four iterations of the ordinance, or of the redevelopment plan, there are four dates, there was different language used in each one. There were.
I think the latest one was February of 21?
It was May 3rd of 21. May 3rd of 21.
Okay, May 3rd. I don't know if I have that one. Did you pull that crap out that I just mentioned?
Well, that's the redevelopment plan, and there's various, there's different language in each of the four versions. The council had considered, if you remember, this body went through the first version, and then we wrote a very specific recommendation and commentary to the governing body. The governing body took that to heart, the governing body then drafted a response and incorporated much of what the planning board had requested. Somehow, some of that got later carved out, okay? So there was language that got carved out of the final redevelopment plan. So I have to review the developers' agreement, which I didn't have a chance to do this today because this just came up, and because Mr. Lucino didn't send it to me. No, just.
Well, I want to see Verona's portion of this.
I got it from Verona and then sent it to the board.
I want to see Verona's version. I want to see yours.
We were having a conversation later, late this afternoon, and I didn't get a chance to look at it, I wouldn't have had a chance to look at it anyway. But there is a chance, and again, we have to get to this, there appears to be some ambiguity in the agreement.
Well, I will, I agree with you on that, there was a lot. But I will say, I remember they left the steep slope out there, but I think they put the stormwater.
But there's other language, and then there seems to be a distinction, and we don't know if it's a distinction with a difference or a distinction without a difference, and we're going to have to rely on the engineer probably, which we don't get to yet, we could talk offline, but about whether the soil and the sediment controls are totally different than the stormwater controls.
Right.
There's two different regulations in it, so you might appear that it might be.
No, 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 no.
Well, that's why I was going to ask the engineer, but.
That's HEP, you're talking about soil, HEP, STD controls?
There's two different regulations, two different statutes. There's two different regulations, two different statutes, so, or two different subsections or whatever, but I'll talk to Mr. Alvarez about that.
Okay.
Because, and then obviously.
He probably hasn't read our ordinance yet.
It's not up to me. It's going to be up to the board as the interpretation, but, and, you know, we will get together and, but that's the issue that has to be addressed.
Right. I mean, I understand that and thank you for looking into that and thank you for sending all of us a copy of that developers' agreement, someone, so we can read it if we would like for fun, 74 pages of fun. But I like reading stuff like that, so I would love a copy of the latest agreement. I am also concerned about, you know, saying that we have all this natural open space on this site, 33% of natural open space, whatever it is, and somewhere on this site, there has to be infiltration. And I just, I find it hard to believe that it's zero, zero.
I mean, all, all, all the tests are indicating that it's zero. Now, all of that open space there where there's going to be landscaping and grassed areas, if there is any infiltration, it will occur. So, I'm not stopping any of that and in fact, I'm, we're making it better because we could have had 75% coverage. We're only 64% coverage.
I understand that. I've heard that one before.
So, where there can be, it's true.
I know.
Yeah, so where there is, where there can be infiltration, we're allowing it to occur in a higher area, yeah, than would be permitted by your ordinance. So.
You're allowing it to occur. It's occurring naturally. That's the whole point. It's occurring naturally.
No, I'm saying allowing it to occur by not, we, the building could, we could have had 75% coverage. We have less than that.
Right.
Yeah, so there's more area where infiltration could occur.
I love that sound. That's, that's, that's really, come on. That's just not necessary, you know?
Yeah.
I don't think it is. All right, I have further questions, so just give me a second. What would be the problem with giving us some kind of water quality control? What would be the big problem with providing water quality control?
I mean, part of it is, part of it is the design that we're doing.
You have the basins, right?
Yeah.
You don't treat the water?
What?
The water isn't treated as it runs through it?
No.
And what would be the problem with doing that?
The, because you can't, they're not, it's not, how would it be treated? These are, these are a storage tank, the underground ones. We are providing water quality within the bioretention basin and the swale and the permeable pavement.
But it's this big, you know, it's this big compared to the overall vastness of the site.
But what would be the point of that? You got to, the purpose of water quality is to reduce the TSS, the total suspended solids.
Right.
You're not getting, in accordance with the DEP who studies these things, the production, you know, the roofs, the concrete is, does not have a production of TSS. So, what would you be providing water quality for? By the fact that this building being constructed where there was surface parking, you have improved the water quality of this site dramatically, just by the development of the site. You're reducing the motor vehicle impervious pavement by 0.58 acres. That's a huge improvement for water quality just by that happening.
I mean, there is going to be rain hitting the roof and running down five entire stories of driver pavement. I mean, you know, it's going to get in.
As I mentioned before, we're counting the rooftop of that. That rain, it's not about the production of the motor vehicle.
What are you doing to, I'm sorry, repeat that?
The roof, the roof portion is accounted for within those numbers I gave.
I understand that you don't think that water will run down the ramps?
That's, you understand the goal of that runoff is when you have motor vehicle surfaces, the rain that's falling on those vehicles, getting into their engines and creating the oil to drop out of that. That's your, that's part of the production of TSS, the suspended solids are coming out of that. That's why they look at, DEP looks at motor vehicle surfaces different than they look at a sidewalk or a building because you don't have that production. So, your ordinance is written the way the DEPs used to be written. They never, they never in practice enforced it that way. They made the rule changes a couple of years ago where they made the distinction of motor vehicle service. Your ordinance is outdated in that respect.
Our ordinance is actually pretty new and it was done specifically.
I thought about in terms of the, in terms of the DEP stormwater design, your ordinance has the old definition of impervious.
We, we have both.
The way you, the way you address water quality is the old way that DEP addressed it.
Well, we're just old fashioned here. I'm sorry? Sure.
This was something I've actually been wondering about and not being a stormwater engineer, admittedly. You talked about the vehicle surfaces and that apparently you're only counting the top level of the parking garage and you just stated that the concern is rain falling onto a parked motor vehicle and causing debris or solids to flow out of that vehicle.
That's one of the concerns.
The way that I, when I think about this conceptually, I would assume that the problem with a parking surface is not so much the vehicle that's sitting there, but the vehicles that have been sitting there in the past leaking oil or otherwise affecting the pavement surface and then rainfall picking up that, those contaminants and carrying them into a storm break. And why I'm wondering about this conceptually is you're still going to have five floors of vehicles that are still going to deposit material onto some sort of parking deck and I don't know where that eventually is ended, is expected to go. Is it expected to permanently stay on every level of the parking deck? Is it expected to go into a sanitary sewer through washing and maintenance of the parking deck? Or is it expected to eventually go into a storm sewer? I mean, eventually that material has to go somewhere.
The, the way that DEP looks at that is covered parking would not, would not be deemed to be motor vehicle surface parking, not being, so I'm looking at having DEP interpret.
If I understood your testimony earlier, you said there's, you know, runoff will be gathered by the, on the roof.
It's going to be collected.
Columns or something, like it's not running like down.
Well, I mean, they're going to cap, they're going to capture, you know, you're going to have rainfall down. They're going to have, you know, your architect does the design of the garage. They're going to have inlets of some sort to collect that drainage.
At the, at the roof?
At the top levels.
Right.
And that's what I was referring to. So, could there be a little bit of water that maybe goes down the ramp and turn, you know, I mean, potentially, but it's going to be such a negligible effect that, and then, you know, in accordance with the DEP regs, that, you know, when you have a covered parking area, that's not considered derbing impervious producing this issue of TSS. So.
Right.
Can I say that there will be never be any kind of order getting to those low levels? But, but that's not, you know, I'm following the DEP regulations related to this.
For the sake, for the sake of like, say, I get it, right, you know, molecular, molecules are going to go where they're going to go. Any amount of water is going to flow. But floor, you know, T minus 1, 2, 3 essentially are, like, if I'm walking to my car, am I heat going to be wet if it's raining? That's.
You're, you're getting covered parking.
Right.
Those lower levels. So, yes, you're absolutely right. You're not getting.
So, I wanted to clarify to Mayor what you were going at, that, you know, I don't think that there's runoff going zigzagging down all these floors.
Right, I'm just saying that at some point in time, you have to account for what is going to drip off of cars and this may be a hole in the regulations, you know, and I, again, also not being a mechanical engineer, I don't know whether or not drains and parking garages go to sanitary sewers or go to stormwater.
Stormwater.
Yeah, storm sewers on lower levels of park, of parking garages I'd be referring.
Storm.
So, this could be, this could be a problem with regulations and that's why I'm approaching this from a conceptual standpoint, more so than a regulatory standpoint. I understand your argument that you have to design the DEP regs, which is fair, but my question is still, where does, what happens to leaked materials off of vehicles in a parking garage? What's the long run disposition of that?
I would have to sort of defer to building maintenance on that and what, how they handle that in the garage. I'm not sure how often they would, would hose that down or let the oil, you know, sit in there like my driveway.
Do you, do you have maintenance plans for both your impervious surface, I'm sorry, your permeable paver section and your bioretention basin?
The report that was submitted most recently, the ONM manual, operation maintenance manual addresses those, whatever features we have.
And you'll put a deed notice in with, deed restrict those areas because they become part of your.
The portions that are, that are part of the green infrastructure would have, you know, deed restrictions.
The bioretention basin.
And the swale and the permeable pavement would have to have some sort of restrictions that you wouldn't be able to seal that permeable pavement in the future.
Okay. I have a question about the unit hydrograph that you relied upon here. So, do you work outside of New Jersey a lot?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. We usually use standard up here. This one says Delmarva, which is a totally different volume of rainfall in faster time.
No, I know the difference. I mean.
Why are we using Delmarva when we should be using standard in our area?
We, I'll, I'll look at that, but I mean, certain, a lot of New Jersey, you can use Delmarva when you're in a certain area.
We're up north. We're in the hills.
I'll, I'll look at the regulations and if we have to change that, we'll change it.
I think the Soil Conservation Service would state that we need to use standard in our area. I think SES says that we use standard here.
I'll, I'll confirm that and if that's the case, we'll make the change.
If that's the case, we make the change, that's going to spike your hydrograph.
It doesn't work like that.
Really?
Yeah, really, yes. I am a professional and.
I understand that. I just want to know.
I provided a drainage report with my license on it through analysis.
Of course, I'm not questioning that. I just.
It seems like it.
I'm saying, okay.
When, when you have routings of different drainage areas, when, the timing when those things interreact. So, if you spike it in one, you got to look at how everything interacts on the whole site. And so, a spike, it's not that directly. Going from Delmarva to standard or whatever does not instantly mean you're going to have a higher spike. You got to look at the whole routing system. If that's the case, I'll confirm it. I'll change it and we'll, so we have to, if we have to make the basin a little bigger, then we'll make the basin a little bigger.
That's what I'm thinking. That's my fear is that that might happen.
That's not a big deal. I've switched on other projects between the two.
How would that ripple through the site? Like if you had to make a basin, the basins bigger? If you had to expand.
If I did, the basement would get a little bigger. It's, you know, it's, you're talking percentages. You know, you're not talking a huge number. So, this bioretention basin gets a little bigger. The grading gets adjusted. The underground basin gets a little bigger. It's not, that's not a big deal. And if that's the case, if those are, if those are the numbers that have to be routed, I'll route it that way and give another revised report.
I'm not, believe me, I'm not looking to make more work for anyone here, but.
But if that's the case.
I have to point these things out.
If that's the case, we'll, we'll.
So, that, that does not increase the peak factor at all?
There would be a peak in, it does increase it. What I'm saying is when you look at all the various areas within a routing, you're not looking at just one single one. All those, the runoff from all the different directions, et cetera, it all interacts on those peaks. So, it's not, it's not a, what I'm trying to say is it's not as simple like it's going to increase by 20% across the board. There's, the way, the way the routings, when I look at the full thing, it might be 10% or something, you know what I mean? So, it's going to be some amount, whatever that amount is, even if it's 20 or whatever it is. So, I have to make something a little bigger. That's not, it's not a big deal.
You want to follow up on that?
It, all that, if the peak factor goes up or the peak goes up, my basin gets a little bigger. It attenuates the flow to the percentages I need to meet for the DEP. Doesn't make a difference. That what matters is that discharge towards the inlet in the street, regardless of which way I'm analyzing it, I'm going to hit that reduction. If the basin needs to get bigger to get to that percentage reduction, then so be it.
So, when you make a basin bigger, do you go outward or down? Which way? Both? Any way?
Up, left, right. It doesn't make a difference.
Okay.
I'll look at this. I'll have to look at where, you know, where I can put with columns, you know, you know, with these systems, it could be, it could be an L-shaped basin. It doesn't make a difference.
One, one question before I, you pick up on this discussion if you, if you would please. The cleanout holes on those basins, how does one really get in there and actually do maintenance? I know that they're like crates.
Yeah, that's a maintenance, it's, in the ONM manual, there's the maintenance document from the manufacturer. It's a, you know, a vacuum type thing that they would.
So, you added a couple of, you added a couple of ports. I see that.
Yep.
My question is, it's in the garage floor and if something goes wrong, do you have to tear up the garage flooring to get down there and really fear a problem?
I've never had a system that I've heard had to get ripped up. I mean, if, if.
It's just a question. I'm not saying it's going to happen.
No, if proper maintenance, you know, which is what we're doing in the ONM manual, there'd be no issues with that. Obviously, anything on the site, if, if there was an issue with anything that's underground and they had to replace it, then they're going to have to figure out how to do that. It's not going to happen. As long as you maintain that thing, that's, that's just not going to happen.
Alvaro.
Okay, you were the one who prepared the report and modeled the system?
I reviewed it. I'm not, I don't run the Hydracap files.
So, the Delmarva unit hydrograph, is it, is it a big issue?
I've done that. I'll look at it. I've done that. I've been practicing for.
I mean, it is, I mean, there are things that need to be clarified. It is true that with the detention structure, you can attenuate the peak flow. That's true. You can increase the size.
Yeah.
But the, the difference between the peaking factor of the Delmarva that shouldn't be used because the Delmarva is located at the coast and very south.
I'll confirm that and instead if.
No, I'm telling you. I'm telling you. So, it's, it's designed, this, why this peaking factor is less is 284 versus the standard, which is 484. So, it's a, it's a big reduction. So, the, the purpose of the Delmarva unit hydrograph is because it's in coastal areas. So, what happens is that you have a lot of flat slopes and you have natural areas that you can inundate. So, what happens is that the flow just spurs out and therefore the peak flow attenuates and that's why you have the difference between the peaking factor of the Delmarva being 284 versus the standard, which is 484. Even in, for example, in urban areas, the peaking factor is even more. It's like 525, if I'm not mistaken, 525, 575. So, the meaning of that is that the peak flow increases. So, that is a big issue that need to be reviewed. It's certain that you can attenuate the peak flow by detention structures is true, but you'll see that your numbers are going to be higher.
Yeah, again, we'll, we'll look at it. I've, I've changed between those, those, those before and we've been able to address that in other projects where we've made that change. So, we'll, if that's the case, I'll just confirm it and then we'll, we'll make the change. I mean, if, if that's the case, we're going to have to comply. We're going to have to figure out a way to do it. So, I'll, we'll have to revise whatever I need to revise to make it work.
It's, I mean, probably whoever run the model selected the wrong unit hydrograph, it has to be.
Again, I'll, I'll confirm it and we'll, we'll look at the design.
And that's why I asked if you guys worked down, like I figured maybe you worked down Delaware or Maryland some, I mean, that's Delaware, Maryland, Virginia.
No, I mean, that's Delmarva. I mean, we do.
It's what? Delmarva.
No, we, Delmarva is just Mama County and such like that where we do projects.
Yeah, it's Delaware, actually.
Down the shore.
Yeah, it's Delaware, Maryland and Virginia.
All right. But that's, moving on from this, is this something that you can have done by the next meeting?
We wouldn't be able to review it by the next meeting.
No, no. The next, the next meeting's next Thursday. Yeah, no. I mean, I could probably rerun it or whatever, but I mean, I don't think, it certainly wouldn't be done and presented and submitted.
Right. He would need some time and I mean, he's got a team of people I'm sure working.
Yeah, so I mean, it would need time and then, you know, you'd want a week or more to review it and whatever. So, it's not, it's not that simple to change.
What, you're going to, say again? Alvaro, do you have more questions? Or do you want to wait until they rerun the numbers?
These questions actually are going to be.
Go ahead.
So, okay, you, actually you asked.
asked one of the questions regarding the unit hydrograph that I had. So the other thing is that regarding the, the quality standard, so something that because of the, the code 45512A2 calls for the total area of impervious surface collected by a new stormwater conveyance system that was not in place. So under that definition, it seems like they need to comply with that, but it's something that you need to, need to discuss. I, I looked at up this, this morning, the code, the Verona code. So I, I looked it up. It's a chapter.
It's on the code does have that.
Well, no, the issue is the language in the agreement of whether it refers to the code specifically or whether not. And then Mr. Lucino believes that even if the code, I'm not saying he does, but we discussed that perhaps if the code does apply, it's still superseded by RSIS, which I kinda didn't agree with that language. But we need to, first, we need to mine out the exact language in the redevelopment agreement and then work backwards from there. And then we can discuss, then I'll need your engineering opinion on certain distinctions.
Okay. All right. So the next.
I, I think that's right. I would just add that it, I agree that if there's language in the redevelopment agreement, that needs to be reviewed because that's an agreement between the parties. In terms of the redevelopment plan, the language really doesn't mean anything because Verona can't and no municipality can decide as a piece of legislation that it's going to trump RSIS if it can't trump RSIS. And I think the lan, we'll, we'll go through it. I think the language I'm having in the plan, but we'll, 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 we'll figure that out.
You can actually, you can install manufactured devices, I mean, a couple of, a couple of them here and there, but I mean, that's something that we can discuss later.
Because here's the other thing, too. If there are things that we can do as a, as a practical matter that will, you know, improve, you know, what we're trying to improve, we'll, we'll do that. And I, I think that's something we can discuss.
Okay. So the next question is that, that catches my attention is that being the infiltration rate zero, it's, I, I never seen that in it.
I mean, these are tests that.
Yeah, I know, I know. It's a.
Basically, these tests that they did, a lot of these tests were, were basin flood tests based upon the rock. And basically, the test at a certain point, if it doesn't drain at a certain point, that that test fails and it's a zero.
Yeah, so.
That's what this is. So that, that, these are tests, a lot of these tests were, were rock, on rock.
Yeah, I, I could see that, but also what I see is like, this is a soil type C, but the.
And that's why we did all these additional tests. Well, that's why you do the test. I mean, the, the soil, those designations are, are regional, they're not site specific.
But it's then in soil boring, number one, you found groundwater at 7.2. So the, the water has to come from somewhere. So infiltration has to be occurring over there. But at the same time, the, the swales and the bio retention basin that you're proposing, the bio retention basin may, as you may know, actually has several objectives. One of them is to reduce the velocity, number one. Number two, to gradually, I mean, retain the, the volume and gradually release it. And you can also infiltrate. In this case, it seems like you're looking for infiltration because you have perforated pipes on, on the ground.
That's not infiltration.
So what happens is if you have, so the purpose of having a perforated pipe, what is the purpose of that?
In the DEP, the BMP or the DEP, when you have a bio retention basin or even permeable soil and the permeability rates of the soil beneath that don't meet the threshold for DEP, meaning a, a one inch per hour test, field test, you have to, you, you have to put underdrains. It's a requirement by the DEP. So what that, what that basin gets is you still get the water quality because the soil, the water's going down through that. You do not get infiltration, you do not get recharge.
Yeah. So the thing is that what happens is that you need to calculate the drain time, right? For any, yeah, you need to calculate the, the drain time. So the drain time has a formula.
It's in our drainage report.
Yeah. So, so is the volume of water that you intend to retain divided by the area of the base, infiltration basin or bio retention basin times the infiltration rate that's in the denominator. So if that is zero, that means that the drain time is zero. It's, it's.
No, I mean, if, if, if you go through our drainage report, that, that has a, that has a, you know, it has to spread the, the data, the, the chart and the, and the printout tables showing the, the basin. So that, that basin, you know, water gets in it, backs up, it goes out through the orifices. So the, 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 the orifice is down at the elevation of the perforated pipe.
I, I know that, but.
I'm not sure what you're.
But, yeah, but the water then is gonna be stagnant there so how long?
No. Again, if, if you review the stormwater report, that has, yeah, that has charts in there that shows that the basin drains out within the 72 hours that you need to per DEP. The basin is, is in compliance with the DEP regulations.
So how did you calculate the drain time then?
I, I use program HydroCAD. So that's.
No, I, I know how to use, I use it every day.
Okay, yeah. I'm just.
Every day. I do the designs. I mean, I review it and I do it. So I, I know how to use it.
So what's, what's the question?
What, yeah.
The question is how you calculate it at the same time?
That program, it's calculated within that program. Yeah.
You need to show, if you go to chapter, chapters nine, three, nine, six of the BMP manual, you'll see that you need to calculate the drain time. There is a formula there.
Yeah. But again, that's, that's by hand. That's, HydroCAD does that calculations. I've submitted the HydroCAD files to the DEP for.
Again, I use HydroCAD all the time.
So do I.
So I use.
So what I'm saying is HAC, HMS, SWIM, GEisha, you name it. That's what I do.
I have a PhD in water resources.
I, I only have a law degree. So I, so are you saying that HydroCAD is not acceptable to you in terms of the calculation?
I'm telling you, I use it all the time.
I know you use it all the time. I'm asking.
Yes, I use it because it's acceptable.
Okay, well, he said it was good.
My direct question was, how did you calculate the drain time? If you go through the chapters that I gave you for the BMP manual, you.
I'll, I'll look at that. But again, that, that's a hand calculation which is done within HydroCAD. So I mean, you could do the whole drainage analysis by hand.
You need to do it.
I, I've never had to do that. Well, I'll look at it.
I'm starting to get confused now. Are you saying that within HydroCAD, there are different formulas and he needs to show the formula he used?
No. The thing is that if you go to the BMP manual, these chapters, I can write a memo.
I'm not gonna read the manual.
No, 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 no. I'm gonna write a memo, a memo, a memo. I'm gonna write a memo.
Are you saying that for this particular case, this is invalid somehow or another? Like you could normally.
So I, I think what, I think what's getting discussed here is this. Mr. Savage says that within the HydroCAD program, those calculations, those calculations that are found in chapter in the BMP manuals are already built into his CAD system, his HydroCAD system. But you're saying you have to do it manually why? What's the difference? Tell us.
No, no. The thing is that the, the, the systems that they are proposing, meaning the swales and the bio retention basin, actually, they are not providing any infiltration, zero. Okay? So what happens is that all these systems that supposedly you're designing to provide infiltration, you need to evacuate, drain that water that is being held temporarily there within 72 hours.
Mr. Alvarez, let me, let me understand.
So what happens is that if, if your drain time is being reached by actually conveying that through one of the orifices, that's another story.
To, to clarify, that, that the bio retention basin, the underdrains are beneath the soil layers. So the, the, what's getting to that perforated pipe is not going through the soils that have no permeability.
I know that.
Yeah, okay.
I know that.
So, so the drain time is associated with the water going through that into the perforated pipe.
Into the orifices. You have that.
Of course. Well, it, it can't infiltrate. There's no, there's no permeability.
Can you, can you tell me which part of the BMP manual actually mandates that even though you don't have infiltration, infiltration being zero, you need to provide perforated pipes?
Not all time. It's, it's within the BMP section for bio retention.
Which chapter?
I, I think that's nine, three. I don't, I don't know.
I'll look at it.
It's in, it's in the, the section for the bio retention and they have it in there for permeable pavement.
So for, I would like to, I mean, to you to consider installing the manufactured devices for TSS, the total suspended solids. Somehow it's, I know that, I mean, you're collecting water from the roof and it's supposed to be clean, but you have certain impervious area at the entrance that actually solids are going to run out.
We'll look at if we can incorporate some of that stuff. But again, the water quality for the DEP regulations and, and there's gotta be that discussion about applicability. We, we meet the water quality requirements of the NJDEP. And I know there has to be the discussion between the attorneys regarding applicability, but we, the design meets the DEP water quality requirements.
Yes, and, and then.
It does.
Yeah, no, I know it does, but I mean, you need to discuss.
Well, I know. That's why I just said that the attorneys have to have their discussion.
So far, it does. And regarding your, your question about the 33%, I, I know that you need to analyze the entire lot as a whole, but since, that's my opinion, that, I mean, since it's being discussed here within Verona, it wouldn't be easier to just to break that down, that the 33% is the whole, but this corresponds to Verona and this one corresponds to.
Again, it, it doesn't, it doesn't, I mean, we can make distinction. It doesn't make a difference in terms of calculation.
No, no, I, I know that it makes no difference, but I mean, it just breaks down and.
I mean, that's what I mentioned before. The, the total is 33 and the Verona is 17 and a half for that one, that one number, which has no bearing on the stormwater.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't have, but I mean, it's, that's what I would do.
Okay.
If I'm right, that 33% is in regards to not so much stormwater, but.
No, it's not. It, it was just a representation that, that.
Let me finish. The preserve, it's not the stormwater runoff, it is the preserving of the low impact.
Yeah.
Whatever, the regulations, the form.
Natural, natural land cover. So that, that was just a representation about.
Which is to the New Jersey requirement for filling out that form is on the lot. It's not like you're not paying attention to an ordinance on this town or that.
No, no, that's not a requirement. That was just to represent that in low impact development, we're, we're preserving natural vegetation, but that was just a representation of.
For the sake of that form, 33% is.
It's not a, there's no, there's no number I was trying to hit. There's no requirement for that.
I understand. I understand. But, you know, it, I think to this point, it'd be nice to say, hey, and since we are talking about Verona, that is 17%. That's pertinent. That's, that's, you know, that's half of that, so to speak. But anyway, I, I'm looking at that in detail. I understand.
Yeah, okay.
Just a couple of questions.
Two questions and then I, I'm hoping that you will be able to come back for the next meeting, sir. Sean.
I guess we decide whether or not we do the change, we try to look at that change and then come back after that or we come back next week. We'll, we'll, we'll have to have that discussion. If we're, if we're gonna be looking at changing the, the routing, then it may not make sense to come back next week. It may make sense.
Hold on a second. We're coming back next week.
Me?
Yeah.
No, 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 we're talking about that. I'm asking if he in particular will be back next week. Can you?
Well, the next thing would be.
I'll see you guys. I don't.
That's not gonna be.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I can come back.